Commissioner Preston.
Here.
Vice Mayor Parnas.
Here.
Mayor Dan.
Here. Uh, Vice Mayor, would you do us the honors of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Uh, if we could have approval of the City Commission meeting minutes for May nineteenth, uh, twenty twenty?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston, second from Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, we have a special, uh, City Commission meeting minutes, uh, for May twelfth, twenty twenty. Um, looking for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, uh, from Commissioner Pa- uh, excuse me, Commissioner Preston, second by Commissioner Hudak. All in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, we have acknowledgement of our City Board meeting minutes, our Community Redevelopment Agency meeting minutes from March tenth, twenty twenty, our Code Compliance Meeting Minutes from June twenty-six, tw- twenty nineteen, July ninth, twenty nineteen, July twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen, August twenty-eighth, twenty nineteen, September twen- tenth, twenty nineteen, September twenty-fifth, twenty nineteen, October eighth, twenty nineteen, and October twenty-third, twenty nineteen.
Motion to approve.
The motion. Thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Parnas. All in favor, say, uh, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. It's been approved. Um, our approval of the agenda for June second, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston, seconded by Vice Mayor Parnas. Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, uh, we are now on the public comment portion of tonight's agenda. Persons addressing the commission shall state his or her name and address and may speak for three minutes unless extended for one additional minute by the mayor. Just a reminder that this is but part of public comment for items that are not on the agenda as a formal agenda item. If you have comment about items that are on the agenda, the time to do that is during the public comment period for that item. No comment shall be made related to the personal life or personal qualities of any person, and no language which would offend persons of ordinary sensibilities shall be permitted. Uh, we are broadcasting this via Zoom today, and sorry to just ask the clerk if she could provide instruction about how those who called in or, uh, zoomed in via the internet can, um, let you know that they have a comment.
Uh, Madam Clerk, we have something?
Yes, we do have one person who actually sent an email to be read into the record.
Okay.
And Madam Clerk, before you do that, if you could just let, there, there you go, go ahead.
I, uh, I am, for anyone who called into the meeting, if you want to dial star six on your phone, and that is how you raise your hand to be heard. For others who have logged in via video, you can press participants at the bottom of the screen on the right-hand side of your screen, your laptop, or other computer device, you will see a connect, a link that says raise hand. And once you raise your hand, you'll be recognized by the mayor. Okay, Heather, I, I do not see the comment.
Bringing that up to be read to the, on record?
This is the only one that we have, okay?
Thank you.
Heather, if, if you could start the timer, please. Statement for six-two Deerfield Beach City Commission Meeting. Here Mayor Danz and Commissioners, my name is Eric Ross. I live at five-three-two-three Northwest one-hundred-nineteenth Harris, Pearl Springs, Florida, three-three-zero-seven-six. I am reaching out to you on behalf of ADL.
Ma- Madam Clerk.
Anti-Defamation.
Madam Clerk, pause you. This item is specifically regarding item eleven, so it should be read at that time as opposed to now?
Hey, this is, okay, okay. Alright, we will read it when that item comes up. I believe it's item number ten, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, according to what the gentleman has in his letter, it's item number eleven, but I believe, um, yeah, it's item number eleven. Okay, if we could read it at, at that appropriate time, that would be, that, that's specifically related to item eleven. We'll read it that time. Do we have any other emails that have come in?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, we see, uh, we have a hand raised. Uh, Mr. Dean Callan, your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Dean Callan, thirty-two fifty Southwest Second Court, Deerfield Beach, three-three-four-four-two. Mayor Commissioners, thank you so much for your time. I do want to address how we handled the beach opening, um, over the weekend. I happen to have gone there Sunday evening to only find myself stuck in traffic for an extraordinary amount of time. I understand our city manager was given the authority to open the beaches he saw fit. I understand the initial thinking of phasing in and doing things to try to create some regularity in how many people were there to help with the distancing and everything else during this time with the virus. But here's the problem. It created more of an issue than it needed to. We basically gave a situation that we were not allowed to figure things out for ourselves. We're not stupid. We're citizens. I personally don't need a pa- another parent telling me what to do. I've been raised by my parents. They have passed, and they did what I believe to be a decent job and teach me right from wrong and how to respect people and authority. We here in Deerfield, we pay taxes to use our beach. We were denied the use of our beach because, in my case, living on the west side of Deerfield, had nowhere to park on the beach to be able to appreciate the beach we had, or have, excuse me. We lost parking revenue by keeping the parking areas closed, and we complain that we're not making enough revenue. It created frustration with people that were standing around trying to even just cross the street while there was an abundance of cars. It created a problem for the bridges to be open and closed properly with creating more of a backup. It created problems for our officers that had to try and force what they could down there at the beach at that time. It was definitely handled improperly. It never should have ha- been handled that way. We should be able to go to our beach that was open for everyone, to be able to park, to be able to walk around, to be able to do things properly. We do not any longer need to be dictated what is right and what is wrong for us. If someone wants to say wear a mask down there where you don't have to out in public or whatever, they should have the option not to. If they wa- or to wear the mask, if they don't, they don't have to wear it. But we understand what we are doing. We don't need to be ordered or ruled over. I don't understand how that much authority could have been given to one person to make decisions on behalf of everyone when only one person basically had that right to do what you all tell him to do. We need to take into account that people are suffering, they're hurting, and now that we get one thing open for us, it now created more of an issue, more of a frustration for me and my family personally, to be able to finally get out and enjoy something that I could not even get to. It's not fair to us. That type of thinking is toxic. We're promoting that we, as, as a society, do not know what we are doing. It's wrong. When we open something, we need to open it fully. If the businesses can maintain how to do things in large businesses like Walmart, Costco, Target, that are all in our area, we should be able to let our small businesses open up, doing the things that are appropriate for them. They know what to do. We know what to do. As a businessman in this town, I know what to do. As a citizen of this town, I've lived here with my family since nineteen ninety. I've seen the ins and outs of what we've done and how we've done it over the past. We're repeating the same. We need to stop this. We've reached the point that we have got to change any type of toxic thinking, and that's what we've done. As far as our city manager goes, he was also told to contact me weeks ago by one of our commissioners. He has not yet done that. I'm still waiting for answers for specific questions that I have asked him. I have been ignored time and time again. I'm really tired of our city management taking over and deciding what they want to and what they don't want to do. They answer to you. You are the ruling party. You are the ones that were voted into office to do what was needed for us. We should not have a manager or a management area that is doing what is best for them in most situations. It is wrong. But it's your legacy. It's whether you want to turn it back over to our city and our citizens, knowing what's best and doing things properly, or allowing a manager, which we've done in the past, to take over. I think it's time to really evaluate what we're doing for the people and how we're treating them. People are really hurting. We need our leaders, which are you, to step up and do what we need done, and that's to look at us for who we are, what we're doing, and how we really feel. We feel slighted. I feel slighted. I think it's time to start making some changes. We really need to look at the fact that we are intelligent here in Deerfield.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thank you, Mr. Callan, your time is up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we have anyone else? I don't see any other hands raised. Are there any other emails that have come in? I don't see anymore. We, do we have any emails?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna head and close it to the public then, at this point. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Callan. Uh, the city manager's decision was simply to not have the parking there that was based on, uh, considerations that we felt were in the best interest of the residents of Deerfield Beach. Um, it would have been easier for us to open it, I'm sure, for, for a lot of people. But if things had gone wrong, it would have been very hard to backtrack. So I know that's, that decision wasn't taken lightly. Um, obviously, it's been changed. Some of the other problems that we had, or some of the ones that you've addressed, are county rules. The county rules regarding the mask and everything we have, uh, that we've had in place, uh, we are at the mercy of what the county puts forward. Um, regarding some of the other issues that we've had in the past have been brought up, uh, I, I think a better understanding of what was allowed and what was, as a locksmith, I would imagine that you would know that you were a, uh, allowed to be open during the time, so, uh, I, I, I know this hasn't been easy for any of us, and it, and there's been more than one inconvenience for all of us. Uh, so I, I, we appreciate everyone's patience on it. It was not done with malintent. It was certainly done to try to assist a situation that could have got, been much worse than what it was. Um, be- before we move on, I, I do want to, uh, address one thing. Obviously, as a city, um, a- as Americans, we know what's going on in this country and, and the challenges that we face and, and that we've had. Dealing with this COVID situation is something that's completely unprecedented. Uh, unfortunately, dealing the situation that we've had recently with the death of, uh, George Floyd, um, it's clear that there are certain things that aren't new to us, unfortunately. These are things that have been going on for far too long. Um, and I think it's appropriate as the mayor of this city, a- and I, I know later, I'm sure all the commissioners will, would like to comment as well. But I think for us, um, we know that we stand united with our brothers and sisters who don't have the same treatment as someone like myself does. Uh, Martin Luther King taught us the way about going about peaceful protests, but one thing that Dr. King said also is the ri- uh, a riot is a language of the unheard. It's my opinion for those of us who do not live and deal with overt or hidden racism on a daily basis, it is time for us to keep our mouths shut and to listen, so that those voices will not remain unheard. And that is not the language that they have to use to get their voices heard. It would be arrogant for me to say that I know what it's like. I never will. But what I can say is that I'm in a position to make change and assist in coming up with solutions. And I hope all of us take the time to listen, to not look at it as an inconvenience. It is a time for action, and it is a time for us in this position to listen. So thank you for giving me that time to say that. If we could move on to the next item on the agenda?
Item number one is a resolution of the City Commission in Cedarfield Beach, Florida, appointing Amy K. Tanner to the Historical Preservation Board and providing for an effective date.
Yes. Uh, before we move forward with this, i- if it's alright, I, I did request this and the sponsor of this item. I'd like to have this item table, uh, indefinitely. I know we're not meeting right now with this board. Um, there's a few things I, 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 I think Ms. Tanner would be an excellent uh, representative on there, but there are a few things that I want to work out before I move forward with this, so if it's, everyone's alright with it, I'd like to table this item.
Motion to table. Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor and second from Commissioner Hudak. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for that. I appreciate it.
Item number two is a presentation by administration regarding COVID-nineteen fiscal impacts.
Good evening, uh, Mayor. Is there, unless there's anything that you want to start with, I can go ahead and, and start the presentation.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Samantha, if you could, please bring that presentation up. And so at the last commission meeting, uh, Mayor requested that a presentation be provided to provide, uh, the City Commission with an update on the fiscal impacts of COVID that we have experienced, uh, so far. Um, what we project those impacts to be for the remainder of the fiscal year, um, what those revenue shortfalls uh, numbers look like, as well as what we have done to, uh, bridge that gap and to additionally, um, what we're going to continue to do from reducing expenditures. Uh, and then we'll talk about some, towards the end, we'll talk about some of the, the budgetary gap measures, uh, recapping what we've already done, uh, what potentially could happen, and then what some, some of our additional options are. Uh, and I want to provide that as I'm still waiting for the presentation to come up. I do not see it yet.
Uh, Dave, I don't have the presentation, and Heather informed me that she doesn't have it either.
Okay, it looks like I have the ability to share my screen, so I'll do that.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, everybody can see the presentation, correct? Okay, so this is what we just talked about, how we'll go through the presentation. So how has the economy really been impacted, uh, on this, you know? Uh, through this, beginning in March, starting to get better, um, airline travel here in Florida was ju- basically non-existent uh, for, for most of, of the remainder of March, second half of March, April, and into May, uh, seeing a non- uh, ninety-seven percent decline in sales in the airline industry, which we know is a direct reflection on the amount of business and tor- tourism that we see here in the state. Uh, tourism, our beaches, our hotels are a staple revenue source for, uh, for us here in, in particular South Florida, but for the state as well, where we share in a lot of tourism dollars that, that come in. Uh, that has had a dramatic impact on our, on our tax revenues. Of course, all of the universities, schools, summer camps, daycares, uh, are closed and remain closed through the summer, uh, possibly into the fall, but as of recently and, and even between, uh, this presentation and today, I, I have heard that, uh, the Broward School Board is, is looking to have schools open for the fall, so that is, that is some positive news there, as well as many universities who are deciding to, um, to open up while others still are deciding to do online classes. Um, the, the non-essential business closures, um, was obviously, and, and even as we heard a little bit earlier, uh, from the mayor and, and from a resident, and the non-essential business closures that we experienced have been uh, detrimental over the past couple of months, uh, to the economy, uh, not only here locally or the nation even, but, but worldwide. Um, it is positive to start to see, uh, the reopenings of the businesses. We are clearly in, uh, phase one of the reopening strategy. Uh, the county has, uh, allowed for many reopenings. To say that originally, you know, when the, when they were starting to opening businesses, they would say, uh, you know, for instance, a, a doctor's office can't open, and now this type of business can open. Where now, they've got so much reopened at this point, uh, that they're just simply saying what, what is still remaining. So that, that's really positive to see that that's coming back. And, um, although that's really great, a lot of it's going to hinge on consumer confidence. And when they are going to, uh, when consumers are going to feel confident to get back out there into retail establishments, uh, into the restaurants, into our tourist destinations, our hotels, our, our beaches, and, and, and those sorts of so things, and, and that, that also relates back to the disposable income with so many on unemployment right now, um, that disposable income i- is just not there, uh, with the unemployment rate sitting there at fifteen percent. The big unknown here is going to be, uh, when are we going to see immunity of the vaccine? And that, that's really going to be key to getting us back to a place of normalcy. And, um, you know, although no known timeframe of a vaccine can be, can be given right now, uh, it is encouraging to hear some of the experts say that it could be within the end of this, within, within a year, so, um, that, that's encouraging. And then, of course, you always hear that, could there be a second wave of this virus? Um, due to some of the phased reopenings, uh, I believe there's the, uh, there's concerns about a second wave coming with, with all the the large-scale protests which have occurred. Um, and then, uh, of course, when we get into the colder months, will there be a resurgence? So all these are kind of unknown factors when it comes to, to the revenue losses and, and when we'll bounce back. In terms of the, the direct costs that we have had so far, uh, with, with COVID-nineteen, um, we have seen about four, uh, four-hundred-and-forty-six-thousand-dollar, uh, impact on those costs. Uh, three-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand of that is related to personnel costs, whether that be, uh, through the federally mandated EFMLA, uh, which provides, uh, time off and benefits to those affected by COVID. Um, that comes out of the city's pocket, although it's a federal mandate, is an unfunded mandate. And then, uh, of course, as you know, for the initial, about thirty-day period of our, uh, initial response to COVID, we were in an emergency response, uh, criti- critical, um, uh, incident employment pay policy. Um, and then with our operating costs, uh, currently at about thirty-one thousand and various supplies that we have had to uh, purchase, whether that be signage, PPE, um, plexiglass for windows, uh, a- all those supplies are, have been, have been purchased, and, and those will continue to grow. Luckily, uh, we have started to see some of that PPE supplies coming in from, uh, into the county, from the state, and we've been able to take advantage of, of some of that to increase our stock. Uh, capital expenses have equaled eighty-nine thousand. A lot of that has been, uh, equipment to get our workforce more mobile and into a telecommuting environment. This slide right here, um, I, I think it's important to, to show the trend of our general revenue over a period of three years, and here, the, um, the gray line here represents fiscal year seventeen-eighteen, the orange line represents eighteen-nineteen, and then the blue line represents this current fiscal year. And so as you can see, that at least for the, um, up until March, there's relative consistency in the collection of revenues. And, uh, beyond that, for eighteen-nineteen and seventeen-eighteen, the revenues were pretty consistent as well. So, you know, middle of March hits, and you see the revenues declining. And that obviously is a direct result of the, uh, stay-at-home orders, the business closures, and, uh, the, the city facility closures. So that has dropped off, and those numbers are good up until April. Um, by, you know, mid-June, we will have our, our May numbers, and we'll be able to report those as well. Uh, we suspect that those will be relatively low, um, but with the reopenings that we've been seeing, um, we're, we're likely to start seeing those numbers start to climb up to some degree, to what extent, again, is going to re- be based on consumer, or to consumer confidence, uh, disposable income, and those sorts of things. Um, but that just, and, uh, you know, a picture of the revenue trends, uh, that we've seen over the past three years, obviously, it's important to point out that here, this large spike that we see in December is when we collect those ad valorem taxes, or at least the majority of them. And then for the remainder of the fiscal year, and certainly even after this fiscal year, we're collecting other revenue sources like state shared revenues, uh, communication service taxes, a- and those, those sorts of things. Some of the revenues also come in at the end, which are, are true-ups from the, uh, the enterprise funds, which we reconcile at the end of the year. Expenditures, they're, they're not as, as consistent as the revenues, because a lot of this will depend on when projects and large capital expenditures take place, uh, or simply when, uh, invoices are received and paid. But, so we won't spend a lot of time analyzing, you know, any consistencies here, just to show that you can see the May numbers for the expenditures, um, are drastically lower than what they were in April, and much lower than they were in, uh, seventeen-eighteen and eighteen-nineteen. And they'll actually probably get even lower than that as we, as we get into June, consider the fact that, you know, most, uh, of our, of our, our bills, we'll call them, are paid, uh, you know, thirty days, you receive, you know, you might re- receive an invoice thirty days after a good is received or a service is rendered, and then you might make payment thirty days after that. So we'll still see these expenditures go down. We'll talk a little bit more about some of the expenditure save, savings measures that we have taken here in the city to reduce our expenditures, to meet the, the budgetary gap. And here, I want to obviously again point out that we've received about ninety-seven percent of our ad valorem taxes. That's a good thing, and of course, we do get those upfront in the beginning of the first quarter of the fiscal year. And our budget for revenues and expenditures this year, in the general, one, one hundred and eight million. Uh, the revenues actually received right now are seventy-nine-point-seven million, and the expenses are sixty-six-point-two. So puts us, you know, currently in, in a positive net position at the end of April, um, throughout the remainder of this fiscal year, which is, which is good. It gets us ahead of the game and has allowed us to, um, not kind of be behind the eight ball as the COVID virus hit, in terms of trying to manage the expenditures. It, it put us in a positive position and, and, and uh, allowed us to In terms of trying to manage the expenditures, it, it put us in a positive position and, and, and allowed us to um. To react in a, in a very concise and, and determined manner to uh, reduce these expenditures. Okay, so I want to take some time here to talk about the revenue shortfalls that we're estimating. Um, and, and where they're coming from. So, and these are all from the general fund. And we estimate about four point nine million. In revenue loss as it relates to taxes, assessments and sales tax. Most of which will come in the tur- uh, from the, from the state. And then of course, charges for services and charges for services. Are things like our programming costs and fees that you would see within uh, our, our recreational programming. Or uh, or those types of things. Inspections and permits, we expect uh, a shortfall of approximately sixty-four thousand dollars. Those could be annual inspections for fire inspection uh, services. Um, again, with the, the closures that we had, many businesses being closed with uh, stay-at-home orders. And the, the closure of uh, many city operations. Uh, those things just could not occur during those uh, initial, you know, two months or so of, of the COVID pandemic. Um, other governmental is a whole host of, of other uh, revenue sources. And we believe that that is about eight hundred, eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. And then we have uh, revenue shortfalls from our leases and special events. Um, some of our special events do bring in some revenue. They don't always pay for uh, themselves. But, and then of course, there are leases, for instance, the pier cafe. Um, the, the beach concessions, uh, the towing contract, uh, those sorts of things. Um, and so the total shortfall projected as of four thirty is uh, six point two million. And the way in which we went about estimating this revenue is important. Because it wasn't done based off of uh, anyone. That's any one person or any particular rudimentary way of estimating what has never occurred in the history of, of, you know, this. The past hundred years or modern government accounting. And so a task force was created by the Broward County City uh, Managers Association. And they created a task force and they asked for volunteers of um. Highly experienced professional financial individuals uh, within the organization. To get together, to come up with methodology on how to determine what these revenue shortfalls could be. And what methods can be used to uh, meet those budgetary gaps. Uh, I'm proud to, to say that our, our assistant city manager, Angela Adediren. Was, was part of that task force and participated uh, immensely and coming up with that methodology along with many other uh. Many other people within the, the City Managers Association. So let's talk a little bit now that we have talked about the revenue shortfalls and um. What those are. Let's take a look at what we can expect from a shortfall perspective. And we'll go through this. I'm going to use the center column to explain this first. And then we'll talk about a, a best case and a, in a worst case scenario, which is. Uh, important to, to discuss as well. And as we talked about in a previous slide, the general fund budget for FY twenty is a hundred and eight million dollars. And year to date, what we've realized, what we've received is seventy-nine point seven million. So we need to receive an additional twenty-eight point three million dollars if we were to. Completely balance the budget at the end of the fiscal year. Now, there are revenues that are not going to be impacted by COVID nineteen. And these, these are typically transfers in and out that were, that are scheduled for the year. That could be coming from administrative costs from the uh, enterprise funds. And, and the other, the other transfer uh, could be um. You have your administrative costs and you could also have um. Some other revenues that you're going to realize that again, aren't going to be impacted. So. Uh, we can go through those at the end of the presentation if you need more information on what those may be. But we estimate those to be about ten point one million dollars that we will realize not impacted by COVID. Leaving us about eighteen point two million dollars that would, I would call the variable. Okay? So based on the COVID projected revenue shortfall in the most realistic situation. Uh, that's going to end up with a revenue shortfall of six point two million dollars. If we get more revenue than that and things, the economy bounces back sooner. Um, we could see fifteen point one million doll- or fifteen million dollars. If it is slower to recover and in a worst case scenario. We could see only realize about nine more million dollars of that revenue. Leaving us with a nine point two million dollar uh, revenue shortfall for this particular fiscal year. Um, one thing I want to say about the state shared revenue is that. Just in the past two weeks, they have, they have finally released the first bit of information and insight into the state shared revenues. Whereas they have received in March fifty percent less than they normally uh, would collect. And so for the remainder of their fiscal year. Uh, where they usually give back ninety-five percent of the revenue collected to the local governments. They're scaling that back to fifty percent. And so that's, that's not too far off from what we estimated as the overall revenue loss on the state shared revenue. And um, and it, it's good to get some, some concrete information. We'll probably continue to get those from other, other various revenue sources as we move forward. And as they realize some of their losses as well, because revenues typically are, are, are received in arrears. And then they do for the city as well. Um, and, and the other thing to point out here is that these revenue savings do not reflect. Uh, any expenditure savings that we're going to explain on, on some coming slides. So from the expenditure perspective, I want to explain this as well. And so our current expenditures uh, as of um. The end of April is sixty-six point nine million. Leaving a remaining uh, budgeted expenditures at forty-one point one million. And so based on the uh, best current or worst case scenarios, what's our remaining allocation? And uh, and, and this is what we would be able, our remaining allocation would be under this, this scenario. Okay, of how much we could actually spend for the remainder of the year. So what things have, have we, we done? What measures have we taken? What steps have we taken to reduce our expenditures? Uh, well, back in March, all of our vacant positions were frozen for the remainder of the fiscal year. Um, as a result of our recovery CIE policy, our CIE pay policy, I should say. Um, some positions have been placed into a no pay status where, where those operations just simply have been suspended at this point. Um, staffing schedules, they were uh, scaled back. For, for very, for many reasons. One, so that we could ensure that the workforce. Was working in a safe environment, meaning they were able to social distance. Uh, and we did that through amending their schedules, uh, putting them on, on, on shift work. And, and that, it also reduced the total amount of hours that they're working per week. So for instance, an employee normally working forty hours, in some cases of work was working thirty-six or thirty-two. Or, or um, or, or something along those lines. And, and uh, that was a cost savings as well for us. Uh, during the response phase of the operation, because we were just at essential services. Obviously, a lot of our operating expenses were halted, as well as some of our utility expenses within our facilities. And we'll realize those more as we move through the remainder of the fiscal year. Uh, facility closures resulted, as I said, in lower maintenance and operation costs. Of course, we did have increased custodial costs as we did have to increase the amount of um. You know, sanitation that we did throughout our open facilities, but at the same time, we had facilities that were completely shut down. All of our personnel travel and training has been suspended and or reduced to lower cost online options. Program and event expenditures have been saved as a result of the closures that we have had and our inability to, to host some of these programs and events. And then various operating repair and maintenance expenditures have been suspended. And uh, under the, my direction, uh, directors were, were uh. Were told to analyze their budgets and, and look at what they absolutely had to do. Uh, to, to maintain operations and maintain service levels throughout the city. And then everything else needs to be completely scaled back. And then various capital improvement projects, we have deferred those to a later date. So what does that amount to? In terms of the personnel savings? The operating and the capital projects, those current expenditure reductions equal approximately two point nine million dollars. We continue to analyze the budget line by line. To identify additional cost savings that we can forego to help bridge this budgetary gap. So this represents the, the initial broad brush stroke of getting everything halted as quickly as possible. And now myself and my other two assistant city managers, the CFO and the department directors, we are going line by line to identify. You know, a hundred dollars, a thousand dollars, ten thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars, wherever it may be on each line item to reduce additional from here. So with, as I said, with those current expenditure reductions of two point nine mil- million dollars. The estimated pro- projected additional general fund gap is three point three million dollars. So again, what measures have we taken? We've frozen all the unfilled positions for the remainder of the fiscal year. We've liquidated all of our unfilled purchase orders. We are advocating for funding through CARES and HEROES, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Uh, we've deferred many capital expenditures. Our service level reductions um, have resulted in cost savings and those were kind of a natural thing to occur because of the COVID nineteen closures. And then we reduced our personnel costs additionally through the recovery CIE. I want to talk just a minute about the um, CARES funding and the HEROES funding. Uh, there's. A lot of uncertainty about what may come down to local government. Uh, the initial funding that came down from uh, the federal government in the CARES Act. Did not become available to any local municipality who had less than five hundred thousand in population. And so. Broward County received a significant amount of money from the federal government. Upwards, uh, I think of around three hundred and fifty million dollars, probably a little bit more than that. Um, and we are waiting to see what they're going to do with that. There's no indication that at this point that the county will um. Be providing any of that funding to the cities. However, it has been stated that the county does have the ability to do so. Um, later on in the agenda, we will talk about one, uh, we'll be, be looking for the approval. Of a memorandum of understanding with the county um, that relates a little bit to what I would say is a uh. Very small uh. Amount of funding that I believe that they're trying to provide to the cities. Um, and, and that's through uh, some, a program for code enforcement. And we'll, we'll talk about that when the item gets there, but. All in all, the, the county is not really uh, willing to provide uh, that funding to us. Um, in all fairness, you know, at the end of the day, they are the grant recipient. And uh, if there, if any one city were to not spend that money appropriately. It wouldn't necessarily be the city on the hook for repayment. Uh, it would be the county. So uh, they, they, they do have good reason to be cautious. But I think there's a way in which uh, they could certainly ensure that uh, cities, responsible cities, as we all are. Would send, spend that money appropriately and in line with, with the grant requirements. Lastly, I think it's important to discuss what other measures uh, can we consider? And so these are the tough decisions in some cases. But we could reduce service levels uh, additionally. We could lower um, our programming costs. We could reduce, we could maintain the reductions in the schedules that we have at uh, the pier. We could um, reduce the, we could reduce the uh. The amount of garbage collection we do. That, that, those are the service level reductions that I'm talking about. I know when I talk about garbage, it's a completely separate fund, but I'm just trying to give you the idea of, of what we're, what we're discussing here. We restructuring our contractual services is, is another option. Um, a very good one is, is something that uh. That, that we can do. We can look at um, the various service contracts that we have out there. We're doing that now. We're looking at scaling back some of the services that are provided through those. Uh, some very easy examples would be to um, reduce the frequency of our. Uh, contractual services for lawn, lawn maintenance and, and tree services as, as very simple examples. Um, and again, we are looking at, at doing those and trying to work with our vendors to amend those, those contracts where it will be reasonable to do so. Um, there are, you know, there's additional personnel cost reductions that we could do. Um, and, and those frankly, um, are not. Uh, always easy decisions and there's not a lot of options at our disposal. Uh, or my disposal that, that I should say, or, or options that you can viable options that, that the, the city commission could, could, could look at. Um, because unfortunately, we're very restricted through our collective bargaining agreements. Then of course, uh, we are hopeful that uh, through the second wave of CARES Act or, or HEROES funding. That there will be some sort of revenue supplement that does come down to local governments. Um, I, I don't like to count my chickens before they hatch, so we can't really count on that. But we do know that uh, one trillion dollars was uh, recommended in the, in the, the HEROES Act. Uh, that hasn't been signed yet. I don't know if it will. I, I frankly don't think that one trillion dollars would actually pass. There was a supplemental um. Appropriation that was, that was proposed and that was, I believe, for five hundred. Five hundred forty-five billion. And, and, and that might be the more reasonable amount that comes down to all the local governments. But to say what portion of that would come to the city of Deerfield Beach, uh, we simply do not know. But I, I do think that at some point, um, some uh, funding will come down to local government. Then of course, there's FEMA cost recovery. Okay? This is a, a declared FEMA event. We are uh, we are looking at our costs. We are calculating our costs. And uh, documenting those costs for FEMA cost recovery. Um, this is uncharted territory for us. This is uncharted territory for FEMA. So FEMA is um, it is, I don't want to say making it up as they go, but they're making it up very quickly. In terms of what the rules are going to be. And we know that, that direct costs, the ones that we talked about earlier in the slide are uh, reimbursable through FEMA. Um, but typically, when it comes to personnel, they um. They only, they only reimburse what you have in overtime or any additional personnel expenses that you have via policy. So for instance, um, prior to the CIE, the only policy which we had to rely on for an emergency event, which this is. Is the emergency pay policy and which, which states that uh, employees working in that emergency event get time and a half, right? So uh, because that policy is in place during a hurricane event, they would reimburse for that, that, that time and a half. Or, or that, over the um, the normal um, salary or hourly rate, I should say. Um, however, in this, in this scenario, under the pandemic. Of course, not confirmed, but they have said that there may be consideration for uh, all the direct costs. So in other words, if a uh, if an employee was solely dedicated to COVID nineteen. Those hours in their entirety could be reimbursable. Again, yet to be seen. Money's not in the bank. We can't count on it. Um, another option is increasing our charges for services to increase our revenues. And then another option at our disposal is the use of our reserve funds. We do have a very healthy reserve. I look forward to the next presentation on the, on the CAFER where we will discuss where those reserves are, where those reserve funds are at and what those balances are. And then the sale of surplus city property. It's an option. It's, it's certainly one that that is, has been out there in the arenas of government. Frankly, I don't think that that's something that can be realized in the short amount of time that we have. We did just pass recently our property disposition policy. And so we do have surplus city property. It might be, might be the right time to start looking to advertise those and seeing what we can do with those properties. And 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 maybe there's a little bit of of revenue that can be derived from from that particular source. And with that, I will take any questions.
I have a question for you. This goes back to expenditures and the pages were numbered, so I can tell you what page number to go back to. But it's the one where we talked about the, the, what money we have that we could spend depending on this different scenario. And I, it's my opinion that what we should be doing is planning for the worst case scenario, which is the $9.2 million deficit. You worded it as we would have this much money to spend depending on the scenario we have. We should be positioning ourselves and I am curious to see exactly what your recommended plan is for the commission. And it's the commission's decisions to make. But a recommendation from you on your approach and how we're going to tackle this is something that I look forward to seeing. But I'm going to tell you right now, I think we need to prep ourselves for a worst case scenario. CARES is going to be a drop in the bucket if we get anything from the county. And I'm not anticipating us getting much at all. The HEROES Act is a pipe dream right now. It hasn't been, it hasn't been approved. We don't know what will come down to us. And I certainly don't want us sitting in a situation in which we anticipate that that's going to make a huge dent in our deficit. I do not support the increase of charges for services. I am not interested in passing down these costs any further to the residents that we have. What we need to look at is making cuts where we need to. And as far as the sale of surplus property, again, from a timeframe standpoint, I agree with you. I don't think that's something that it might replenish where we take money from later on down the road, but it won't give us an immediate hit to be able to avoid that at this time. That's really my statements, but I, I guess not so much questions, but it's a statement. See. Commissioner Hudak, you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. One question I have, and it kind of triggered my brain, talking about service level reductions. I'm not sure if it was the previous commission meeting or the one prior to that. But we discussed the status of the recycling program and the funds that that could save us. Where are we at with that program? Because, you know, the longer we wait, of course, the deeper the hole gets for the city, not just for that program. But at least there's, there's another option there that we may have to really expedite.
Commissioner, to answer your question, we were going to be presenting options at the next city commission meeting.
Okay.
On the recycling, but but, you know, we're looking at general fund impacts and and the recycling, unfortunately, or fortunately, that, you know, is not in the general fund. So it's not going to impact our, our ability to bridge this budgetary gap.
Thank you.
Commissioner, and then Commissioner Preston.
Thank you, Mayor. As far as the the measures for, first of all, let me step back. I concur that we need to target the worst case scenario. If it ends up being the projected or better case scenario, then all the better. But in the meantime, I think we need to plan for the worst. And this is something, this is going to be a work in progress. This is something that we may need to amend several times along the way. But as far as planning going forward, the worst case scenario is what we need to have in mind. The measures for consideration, I mean, I think, but for the increase to our residents, I think we need to look at all of them. To be honest with you, I don't think we can focus on just one or two. I think there needs to be a combination of all of those recommendations taken into consideration going forward. And and the mayor, you know, hit the nail right on the head when it comes to the CARES and the HEROES. You know, as you know, I'm your representative to the Broward League of Cities. The Broward League of Cities recognizes that the CARES money is very important as we, as the 31 municipalities in Broward County are on the front lines. We have shouldered, you know, the lion's share of costs when it comes to COVID-19. And there's a lot of money to be recouped. And so the Broward League of Cities has created a task force to help study the issue and also to advocate at the county level our position to try and get some of those, those funds. I am happy to say that I'm a part of that task force that was created by the Broward League of Cities and we've been studying this. And 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 the CARES money, you know, is $340 million in, in control of Broward County. And our very first meeting was attended by one of the county commissioners. And and he basically was kind of saying, hey, you know, the county has expenses too. For example, you know, all of the childcare opportunities that have gone by the wayside. There are 20,000 airport employees who will probably never go back to work at the airport again. Those people will need to be retrained. You have antibody testing and contract trace tracing for the entire county as well as lost airport and seaport funds as well. So that to me was basically a, a hint as cities don't count on this money that we have other plans for at the county level. The discussions that I've heard are basically crumbs, you know, at best for the city. And it's something that we should definitely not rely on. We have advocated on behalf of the Broward League of Cities that the cities would definitely like to consider some type of indemnification to the county. If the monies are shared, that we understand that the grantee of the funds is the county, not the individual cities. And then should something happen, you know, going forward that, you know, we would be subject to some audit provisions? We would be subject to some indemnification, you know, should the county decide to go forward? I know there was a county commission meeting today where the county accepted the $340 million from the federal government. But it's at their next commission meeting where I believe the county administrator is going to make her recommendation how those funds are to be dispersed. But there's very little indication that the city is going to share, the cities are going to share in any substantive portion of those dollars. But the conversations are ongoing and that's why we have the task force as well. The, the HEROES is $1 trillion, which was only passed by the US House of Representatives and probably has a less than 0% chance of being passed by the United States Senate and being signed by the the president. So I would not count on that. There is a bipartisan compromise bill of $500 billion being discussed in lieu of the $1 trillion. That may get some legs as this crisis deepens and the full extent of the deficits that the lower municipalities lower municipalities are experiencing. Because remember, the CARES funds only went to jurisdictions with 500,000 or more. The HEROES is supposed to target those municipalities less than that. But I would not, I would not put any, I would not put a single number on that line item as a placeholder going, going forward. And then we all know from FEMA, you know, that even if we were to get FEMA dollars, it takes years. You know, we're still fighting FEMA from Wilma for crying out loud. So I would not, I wouldn't really count on those either. I think these need to be, this is a long-winded way of saying that we need to control what we have in our, in our control and our grasp going forward. So whether it be service level reductions or personnel cost reductions and and some type of, you know, savings and 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 looking at our expenditures going forward, that's the combination that we need to look at for the worst case scenario of the 9.2 million, in my opinion, going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Preston.
Mayor, I'd like to thank you as well. And I agree with you that we are to prepare for the worst case scenario. And we need to start thinking now, you know, about our employees. During the presentation of our city manager on the budgetary gaps slide, there was one category that he talked about of restructuring contractual services. And I don't really think that, you know, if push comes to serve, to show that we get really bad, we shouldn't consider restructuring those contractual services of outside companies that we need to just, just look at allowing our city employees to assume those contractual services, doing the medians and those type of work things that they can do rather than get in a tough situation where we are making tough decisions, you know, with our employees and then other people benefiting. So we need to be in a position that we are going to also with the consideration and anything that we are dealing with that we look at how we're going to protect our employees, taking into account what the mayor says. Before it gets better, it's going to get worse. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Okay. Mr. Soroka, is this open to the public, is for public comments on this item?
It's not an action item, so it's up to the purview of the commission. What do you want to hear from the public on it?
I don't see any hands raised regarding it. We, so just to understand, city manager, you're going to be making recommendations at the next meeting regarding what, what your approach, recommended approach to us is with, or is that something? Or were you talking specifically just to recycle, about recycling?
No, no, Mayor. You know, I, I, my recommendation is, 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 I'm in agreement with generally each one of you in terms of what I think our viable options are. That I think first and foremost, we need to look at service level reductions and contractual service restructuring. I will also look at additional personnel cost reductions and ways in which that I can, I can do that. As I, as I mentioned previously, we've already frozen all of our vacant positions. So options are generally limited. But I will engage those conversations. And lastly, you know, I, those are going to be the things that we, that we have to do. And we, we have to, you know, basically squeeze blood from a rock here on every nook and cranny of our budget that we have, and we'll do that. I'd like the time to engage those conversations and then report back to the city commission. I don't know if that will be available for a city commission meeting within two weeks, but I can certainly keep everybody updated as we, as we move along those conversations. And then probably get back with the city commission in this format and at the, the following one, if that would be okay.
Vice Mayor Parnas, I see your hand raised and Commissioner.
Yes. I think one of the things we can do is become more aggressive in money that's owed the city. Whether it be for stormwater, large corporations that may owe us a great deal of money to code violations. I read one the other day where someone owes us 10 grand on a code violation. I think if we get aggressive in collecting money, it'll help. It's not the solution to the problem. But any money we can get into the city, we should get and do it aggressively because it'll ease the situation. We have to find ways to balance the budget and get rid of this, the worst case scenario as, as much as we can. And I think it's one avenue we should be exploring.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudak.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just curious, Mr. City Manager, when do we anticipate getting the numbers for May? I know that those numbers are based on the April 30th, as of April 30th. So is there's a six week lag? Is that accurate?
Commissioner, are you speaking to the, to the revenues?
Yes.
Revenues can, can sometimes be up to 60 days in arrears.
Okay. All right, I think we can move on to the next item then. Thank you for the presentation.
Item number three is a resolution of the city commission, the seat of Deerfield Beach, Florida, accepting and adopting the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2019, authorizing submission to the state, providing for an effective date.
City Manager.
Thank you. It's with great pleasure that I have the ability to, I will not be presenting, but presenting to the city commission the closeout of the 2019 fiscal year and the, and the CAFER. The presentation will be provided by our new, our new CFO, Stephanie Tinsley, as well as our auditing firm, Markham LLC. And so with that, I would like to turn it over to Ms. Tinsley to, to provide her presentation.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Santucci. And good evening, everyone. I am pleased to be before you to do the presentation of the FY 2019 CAFER. Finally, and just briefly, I'm going to briefly go over a couple of things in the beginning. What was the completion process for this CAFER? A review of the net position and the fund balance for the general fund. It does look much better with the improvements at the OPEB. Talk a little bit about that as well as the, the general fund results and the fund balance. And then talk about how the fund balance policy and the compliance that we, we have met for that. And also highlight some of the other operational audit findings and recommendations. And then I will turn it over to the, to Mr. Brandon Lopez to do his audit presentation and confirm everything that I've said. So if we could move to the next slide. So the completion process, we are dictated by the Florida statute 218.32. And generally, I didn't do the whole, write up the whole thing, but there's some very significant parts of it. We must submit our financial report within 45 days after completion of the audit, but no later than nine months after the fiscal year ends. So no later than June 30th, since we are on a September 30th fiscal year. It must be signed by the chair of the governing body, which is the mayor and the chief financial officer, myself, attesting to the accuracy of the information. It must be a single document. So I know in the past, I understand that the compliance portion of the auditor's report was separate from the actual financial reports in the CAFER. But for purposes of submitting to the Florida Department of Financial Services, it must be a single document. And so I do and have made the determination that those need to be together. It shouldn't be adjusted or revised after the fact. And anything else, we can always do as a separate document as you like. But this should be a complete document and that's what you will have and have as attached. Um should be a complete document and that's what you will have and have as attached. Um some other uh things that this is not the only um submission we are required to do. We have um submissions to the Federal Data Clearinghouse. We have um a boatload of uh continuing disclosure agreements for our bonds and other debt um requirements. And um other reporting requirements that we're making lists of. And so we want to keep a good tracking of as well as, of course, um the prestigious GFOA um financial reporting award. This CAFER was um completed um as late as May twenty-seventh into the evening. We were doing um final tweaks and adjustments. And um it could not have been done without the support and collaboration by the Tri-Merge Consulting Group. Um Gray CPA Consulting Services. Um and of course, there's the strength of the Financial and Customer Services Department and other city departments as well. And our auditors, Markham LLP. I do want to say that um coming in, I've been here two and a half months and and. All of these folks were here and, you know, it could have been a a really chaotic um. Time with so many different hands in the pot, but what I did see was that um. We really all came together uh to put together this very complex document, this over a hundred and fifty pages. And each of us had our own strengths and weaknesses and we, another one was able to step up and and support with their strength. And it really was a pretty cohesive um uh uh result. And uh teamwork amongst all of those players. And I really am I'm pretty proud of that and I've I've also want to um indicate that uh. Ms. Tamara Baker, who was really kind of uh thrown in uh without much leadership. Uh really kind of took the reins and held it together. Uh and even so, working with a new CFO. Um I really appreciate having um a good partnership there with her. Um amongst all of the rest of the financial and customer services team. And so we'll move on to the next slide and we will begin to um highlight. Um the summary of the net position and governmental activities. So in prep for this uh. Presentation, I did go back and look at the last time this the CAFER was presented. And um saw that what was the focus and what was some of the questions that had occurred. Um during that presentation. And so I thought it was important for us to look at the summary and net position for the governmental activities. And so for FY twenty nineteen, our total net position has increased. Uh to twenty-five point nine million. Um that is largely due to the fact of the OPEB. Um improvements in the OPEB liability, which was decreased by thirty-three million dollars. Um also, I wanted to kind of point out the re- the. Um there was a um an error in the reporting. For the FY twenty eighteen um net position. And that was something that was pointed out by one of the um citizens with a question that I believe it was Mr. Sullivan. And it prompted me to look a little deeper into that and it turned out that um. Under our restricted uh net position, we had um. Also reflected thirty-three million dollars in capital assets. Those capital assets are already part of the net investment and capital asset line item. So it was not only already in the sixty-six point nine, but it was also reflected in the eighty point five million. Therefore, it caused the unrestricted balance to go look a whole lot more negative. Um than it actually was. So if it was properly recorded. Um it would have been sixty-six point nine, which is the capital assets, net investment. Um restricted would have been reduced to forty-seven point three. And our unrestricted would have been a lower, smaller negative one, a hundred and ten point four million. But the total net position was still exactly the same. It was three point eight million. That doesn't change. So it was just a a slight reporting um issue there. So the drop from forty-seven to twenty-one um of about twenty-five million. Related to about nine million in human services, ten million parks and wrecks, and four million general government. That was um that was liquidated or spent because it was already um, it was already in a restricted state. Okay, and so um with that, we can see that our net position is in a in a much better state than it. And it was um with the implementation of the OPEB at twenty with twenty-five point nine million. So with that, I'm gonna move from the summary of net position.
Real quick, uh Stephanie, um just just in terms of what what the the, what happened with OPEB? The OPEB is a result of two things and 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 it is, it is changing, it it's changes to the plan. Uh improvements in the plan uh that we have made of. And then additionally, the new actuarial study, which came out. And we took, we talked about that previously, and I think that was even brought up during the the last CAFER presentation. Um that uh we suspect that, we suspected at that point that we would have new, a new actuarial study. With new mortality tables and 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 those sorts of things that the actuaries look at and that we would see improvement. And 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 those two things did occur as we as as we did say, and and they did in fact have that positive. Impact on the the total net position.
Okay, yeah, okay, sure, yep. Um and so um also, I wanted to note, I did. I forgot to note that on each of the slides, in case someone's looking at their um CAFER um document. I did reference where you would see every, all of these numbers come from is is from the CAFER and what page it is, just in case if you wanted to take a look. Can be looking at that. So um there is a oh a fairly detailed reconciliation to get from. The governmental net position to um the the general fund fund balances. And um it's actually on page twenty-one of your um CAFER and I'll be happy to go through that. Uh probably more on a one-on-one or two-on-one or or at a different um time. I don't want to take up um hours at this meeting to go over that. So these numbers here from the summary of your general fund fund balances is from your page forty-one of the CAFER. And um it's not actually set up this way. I like to look at it year over year just to see how. The fund balances are um, how are they progressing? And your fund balances are are pretty stable. And so. This is where um we kind of look at how they are broken down from non-spendable restrict.
I am sorry, I'm I'm gonna pause you. Did you say page twenty-one or forty-one of the CAFER?
Um it's page, it's for these fund balances here, they are on page forty-one.
Thank you.
Sure. And so that you will see for FY twenty nineteen, you will see that column. For those other ones, it's in those other CAFERS. There is no comparison like this in a CAFER. I think it's important to see it year over year so that you can see how it's how your um your fund balances. Um levels are year over year. And so um this is, I just presented this way. And so one of the things, um there is no restricted in the at the fund level. The emergency reserves are pretty stable at about three point five million roughly. Um the subsequent year's budget, those are um unspent appropriations. In that current year that is then carried forward into the next year. Um so four point five million of unspent appropriation that was um obligated likely. Or part of a multi-year project was brought forward into the FY twenty nineteen um budget. And likewise with the five million. Um the endowment is pretty stable, the Tamal Shanter project, again, pretty stable. So therefore, your unassigned fund balance is, as of FY twenty nineteen, is seventeen point six million. And again, that's relatively stable. There was a nice little bump from seventeen to eighteen and then it's been pretty stable. And so your total fund balance is approximately twenty-six point seven million. Now, according to the fund bout- balance policy for Deerfield, um unassigned fund balance must be at least ten percent. Of the general fund operating expenses and transfers. So we're gonna go through that. And I'm gonna show you the compliance piece. So we go to the next slide. And part of that is looking at the general fund summary of audited financial results. Again, that's on page eighty-two of the CAFER. It's a, it's a full-page um table. Um I'm only pulling out the total numbers. So your total revenue. Um you were, we were um pretty close on target for total revenues. At a hundred and six million and with a variance of a a negative variance, yes, a six hundred thousand. But well within the one percent plus or minus that is basically industry standard. So it was really pretty close to being on target for a projection of that size. Um total expenditures are one of, is a hundred and nine uh million, I'm sorry, a hundred and, a hundred and five million. Um and came in well under budget. And um a a number of factors played into that. Um at some related a lot to um vacancies and turnovers and things like that. And there were some other. Um issues as well, um but everything is stayed well within budget and actually um help. Um use less of the fund balance. Um so in between the the total revenues, which is your total operating revenues and total operating expenses, there is a a budgeted. Um excess deficiency of two point eight. However, your actual results was a positive, one point four million dollars. So that was very good. Um other sources and uses, and go further down the page if you're looking at the um. On the CAFER, the actual page, um you'll see your transfers in and your transfers out. And so your transfers then was pretty, pretty much on target. Um your transfers out, so you didn't trans, we didn't transfer as much out as we had planned on budgeting. And that could have a lot to do with uh um. Multi-year projects that take longer to do, so may not have transferred those out. So the net change in the fund balance for actual was roughly, obviously, about nine hundred thousand. Um less. Um I thought maybe you probably want to see how the budget is actually balanced. Because this is a, this is per a financial statement approach. We look at if financial statements a little bit different than the budgetary approach. So um on the next slide, I take all of those same line items and I flip them around a little bit. So you can see that the budget was actually in balance. So your total operating revenues was the same line that I was before with the variance of six hundred thousand. Your transfers in move up into the revenue side instead of looking like other sources and uses. And so that's shown as a revenue source. Um and then your net changes. And then your net change in your fund balance, you budgeted a portion of use of fund balance. Um and that stays on the revenue side. So it's total revenues or inflows. And your budget was approximately one um a hundred and fifteen million or so. And then your operating expenditures, again, I did not change anything on that line set, move it a little bit. Your transfers out, you add in your transfers out, again, a a source of um use. And so then your total expenditures or outflows equals a hundred and fifteen point nine million for your final budget. So your budget was in balance, your actuals um in balance. And because of the net change in the fund balance. So that's just proving out the fund balance piece, I mean, the um the final budget. And if go to the next slide, we'll just go back to the way that it looked before. All right, so here, I just wanted to show again that um. Your end result was a much, a lot less use of the fund balance as per the budget. Which was only at nine hundred thousand dollars. Um. We can move on to the next slide. So your fund balance policy basically takes your general fund operating expense. For FY twenty nineteen. Was one hundred and five million approximately. Your general fund transfers out of about four million. Gives you a total of a hundred and nine. Your policy minimum is ten percent. So ten percent would have been ten uh almost eleven million. But your actual unassigned fund balance level is seventeen point six. So well above the the ten percent, you're closer to, we're closer to sixteen, sixteen percent there. Um year over year, going back to FY eighteen and FY seventeen, you can see that. It you've been for the past three years, I could have probably gone back further. Um you've been well above your policy minimum. This policy, your policy, your unassigned fund balance does not include your assigned emergency reserves. Of the three point five that was shown on the other slide. So this is just taking the unassigned fund balance piece.
So, uh and and just to clarify that, so the emergency reserves that we put aside, that that that's not reflected here?
No, it's not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And so with that, that um confirms compliance with your fund balance policy. Uh we're, you know, in good shape at the end of FY twenty nineteen. Um and so uh I'll move on to the next uh topic and just to go over the um. The status of the audit findings and the observations. And so I thought um I kind of did the same thing and kind of went back a couple of years. I think sometimes it's important to look at um the progress, positive or negative. And in this case, I think it's been a very positive um result in the change of things. As they went along year over year. Um so for FY nineteen, we still do have the financial closing reporting as a repeat finding. And that's still a process that we are going to continue to work through and strengthen. Um I certainly do not want to be here uh next year in May. Oh, June, I guess it's actually June now, uh presenting the CAFER. I I. I would like to have the goal and and my team is the same way. Um if we can get it done within six months, that would be great because we certainly got plenty of other things that we have to do. And um doing this audit in CAFER gets in the way. Um so that that is a goal for us. Um the segregation of duties, the payroll related, that um. Yes, it was partially addressed in FY twenty nineteen and we finished addressing it in twenty twenty. Um the position has been filled and we have insured and uh worked through making sure the act. The various access to do certain things have been, have been split up. We still are working together. Um Ms. Robin, who is the Director of Human Resources and myself, we've started having. Um bi-monthly meetings and we, we are going to work through and make sure that we really do. Analyze um these roles and us and the processes and procedures. And we'll get the team in together with 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 us. Um but we're gonna start that dialogue and we have actually started that dialogue. And part of that is part of the um. And I didn't want to go too much into it with with this presentation, but the AG audit. Um we want to make sure that we are being um responsive and that we are. Um taking proactive approaches to making, to. taking proactive approaches to making, to resolving these, whether they're findings or just these recommendations and observations that the auditors are seeing. And I'm sure the AG audit will produce as well. And we have, we have a plan to make those the priorities. The FY twenty eighteen, there was obviously a number of findings and those were obviously resolved during FY, FY twenty nineteen. With only the segregation duties and the financial close was the repeat findings. There's no new findings, which is good for FY twenty nineteen, just those partial repeat findings. And then for FY twenty seventeen, to avoid going on to the next slide, to having another slide, we, I know there were, there were others, there were about ten that were partially addressed. And a lot of those were fully addressed by FY twenty eighteen. And so, so those, this, it's been a really good progress to see. And you know, my goal will be to not have any repeat findings going forward. So with that, unless you have questions for me or if you want to just wait and address them afterwards. I know Brandon Lopez is on, on the, in the Zoom meeting. He's the manager with Markham LLP and he's here to do his presentation and to confirm everything that I've said.
You Lopez?
Yep. Thank you very much, Stephanie. I appreciate. Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioner. My name is Brandon Lopez. I'm a manager at Markham LLP and I served as the manager on the engagement. I'm, I'm going to go through a high level review of the CAFER that you have in front of you. And I'm going to go through our audit reports. And then at the end, like Stephanie mentioned, if there's any questions, you know, I can address or Stephanie can you address as well. So the first report is the independent auditor's report. So if you have the attachment in front of you, it would be the, the attachment that was included in the agenda. It's printed page one and PDF page twenty. And that's our independent auditor's report. And in this report, we basically go through different items mentioning what it is that we're giving a report on. What are management's responsibilities? What are our responsibilities as the auditor? And most importantly, on page two of the report, which is PDF page twenty-one, we give our opinion. And in this report, it states that in all material respects, the financial position of the governmental activities and business type activities each major fund, aggregate money fund information of the city as of September thirty, twenty nineteen is in accordance with government generally accepted audit principle of United States of America, which is essentially a clean opinion. It's called an unmodified opinion and that's the only opinion, you know, the city and you as a commission wants to be associated with. So I do want to, you know, congratulate the city and let them know that they did receive an unmodified, a clean opinion this year. Following along, just one quick thing, you know, that like Stephanie mentioned, this is a very large document. It is a lot of information, a lot of detail. But if you follow along and you go to printed page four, which is PDF page twenty-four. This is management's discussion and analysis. This is, these are about like ten, twelve pages is put together by management. And it's really, if you're going to read any document in this report, if you read management discussion and analysis, this is really the most beneficial. Because what it does, it gives you a comparison from last year to this year. And it gives you an explanation of what, you know, some of those variances, what some of those swings were caused by, you know, what, what things happened throughout the year. So this is a very, you know, beneficial part of the document to read. And again, this is put together by management. Following along, we're going to go to printed page one thirty-two, which is PDF page one fifty-seven. So printed PDF page one fifty-seven. And in here is, is one of first a couple, there's, you know, we're going to be going along as some compliance reports that we're going to be discussing. The first one being on the compliance report on internal control or financial reporting and on compliance on other matters based on government auditing standards. So because, you know, we're a municipality, we're required to follow government auditing standards. And in this letter is where we would report or disclose any internal control issues or financial reporting. And it explains what, what are the two aspects of a, of a finding is? What is a material weakness and what is a significant deficiency? Obviously a material weakness being the most severe significant efficiency being less, less severe. And like Stephanie mentioned, over the years, the city has been progressing and has been addressing their issue. So this year, we only have the one significant deficiency which relates to the financial close. Obviously this past year with the transition of the finance department, management there, and there's a lot going on. Especially when it relates to the, the closeout of the year. So we do have that as a repeat finding, but there were no new findings like Stephanie mentioned. And the, the second finding from the previous year, which related to the bank reconciliations was addressed. We looked through every single banquet for the year to make sure it was in compliance with the city's policy. Making sure it's being prepared and reviewed on a timely basis. So that was addressed. So following along, we're going to go to the next of the compliance reports, which is on PDF page one fifty-nine. And this report goes into, it's our, it's our report on compliance in regards to the uniform guidance and chapter ten, five fifty rules of the auditor general. So essentially when, when a municipality, when the city receives funding from the state or the federal government, if they pass a certain threshold, they're required to undergo what is called a single audit. And in this, this audit, it's a compliance audit to make sure the, the funds are being used in accordance with those grant agreements. And in this report, we would, we would mention if there are any issues of non-compliance that we encountered during our testing. In prior year, you, like Stephanie mentioned, there were two findings that were noted of non-compliance. However, this year, you will see that there were no issues of non-compliance. And the two issues of the prior year were addressed in fiscal year nineteen. So we're happy to let the city know that in this year, this letter notes that there were no findings of non-compliance. Following along, we're going to go to PDF page one seventy. And this letter is the management letter in accordance with the rules of the auditor general of the state of Florida. So in this letter, the auditor general requires basically a communication from the auditors to ensure that the city is in compliance with certain Florida statutes throughout the fiscal year twenty nineteen. And along with an update on any prior year management letter comments. So these, these comments do not rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness. These are just observations and recommendations by us, the auditor for the city for improvement. And like Stephanie mentioned previously, over the years, the, the city has been addressing those findings. I'm sorry, those observations year over year. This year, we do have just the, if you go to PDF page one seventy-three, you're going to see an update. You're going to see an update of the, of the status of prior year findings and current, prior year observations and current year observations. As you'll know, there were no new observation this year. And the prior year observations all were addressed except for the one item that was partially addressed that Stephanie went through that relates to payroll. Like the city manager mentioned, David, the, in regards to the other post-employment benefits, last year was the first year with Gatsby seventy-five, which required all cities and all municipalities to record on the books their OPEB liabilities. In the past, this liability was disclosed in notes, but wasn't required to be recorded. So last year, when that report, that new actuary report was, was completed and having to be recorded, this observation was brought up to the city in regards to looking into their plan to really take a look and make sure that the proper, you know, basically policies and the proper terms were being addressed appropriately. And like the, like David mentioned, the city did go back and revisit the plan and made some amendments to the plan. And in that process, the actuary performed their updated valuation. And, and like Stephanie mentioned, that liability significantly decreased as response to those actions by the city. From one last report, if we follow along, we're going to go to PDF page one seventy-six. And this report is, it's a compliance report pursuant to section two one eight, five one four of the Florida statutes. And essentially what this report is just doing is, is letting the city know and, you know, the, that they're they're in compliance with the investment policy of the city. And, and just making sure that, you know, they're following the policy and there isn't some sort of investments that really aren't in accordance with that policy. So there were no issues encountered as part of our, our audit in twenty nineteen. So that covers the, the compliance and audit reports of the CAFER this year. So like Stephanie mentioned, you know, if there are any questions on those aspects, you know, we're, we're available to address those.
Thank you. You go back to some of the findings. So we're saying three years ago, we had twelve findings. Last year we had seven. We're down to two, one of which has already been addressed and the other is partially addressed. Is that accurate?
That is accurate, correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Commissioner Hudak?
I just want to thank Stephanie and her team. I know that you guys were put under the gun. And I really appreciate all your work in, in getting this accomplished. So great job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Hudak, do you have something else? Okay, Commissioner Drosky?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First of all, this is up on our agenda for resolution to approve tonight. I don't know about everyone else, but I got this electronically on Thursday and by hard copy on Friday. It's a massive document, to say the least, to, to, to go through, which I'm still digesting. You know, I, I wish I would have had the presentation earlier like I have in years past. So I would implore my colleagues that we not vote on this tonight. That we move it to the next agenda to be able to give us more time to go through here and to ask our questions of, of staff and to go through it. It's a, it's a monumental document. I just want to make sure that, you know, we understand it and have our, you know, individual questions, you know, answered before moving, before moving forward. That's my first, that's my first observation. Secondly, is Brandon still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
So I had a question which I relayed through the city attorney. I don't know if it was relayed to you specifically, but if you go to there with me. I guess it's going to be page five of the PDF. And it's restriction on use, the very last paragraph of your letter.
Yes. So this, this letter is a separate letter outside of the CAFER and it's a, it's the communication to those charged with governance. So this letter is required by auditing standards. Basically, and where we would communicate to, you know, those charged with governance, which in this case is the, the commission. If during the audit, we encountered any difficulties dealing with management. If there were any, you know, significant findings we encountered, if there are any uncorrected adjustments. So in that letter, you know, we disclose all that information and we, we, we inform the commission that there were no difficulties encountered and things of that nature. And per auditing standard, it's a letter that is required and submitted to those charged with governance. And then the city commission, you know, has the right to distribute that information to whoever, you know, wherever they please. And on top of that, this is a, you know, public document, a public record, which is then posted to the city website. But the reason for the restriction is, is basically auditing standards. This is something that is communicated directly to those charged with governance by Markham. And then the commission has the right to disperse, distribute that information how they so please.
You're, you're breaking up a little bit, at least from, from what I'm hearing. I, I was able to understand you though. But that last sentence wasn't in the CAFER last year.
So I, I'm not sure what was, because I, I did speak with Anthony and I'm not sure what was included in the agenda package. Because this is a separate document that is not included in the CAFER. But I did review our records and our transmission to, to the commission. And that language is, is standard and it was included in last year's communication letter that we issued and provided to the council. I'm not sure what was included in the agenda package last year. But I can, you know, we do have records of our transmission of prior year's letter and that restriction is there. And again, it's standard language in regards to the auditing standards.
Okay, I'll, that's another reason for me to request voting next meeting to, you know, reconcile this, this package versus last year's package. Let me ask you this, Brandon. You know, there's obviously a lot of, you know, recommendations, you know, that have been whittled down to, to two. I mean, do you have any critiques that you can offer to the city going forward in your, you know, evaluation of our, of our processes and procedures, the way we do business? I mean, you don't have anything specific, you know, in the CAFER, maybe that's not the opportunity for it. But, you know, can you offer, you know, a critique, you know, a way we can do things better here in the city of Deerfield Beach?
So I, I do think the, the fact that you've seen that improvement year over year is, is commendable and especially with all the transition, right, that's taken place. Like Stephanie mentioned earlier, you know, they said it was a very collaborative, you know, project. Given the, you know, the, the significant transition that we had in the finance department this year. And, and to make sure that everything was done correctly and, and by the book and get it done. There is, has been that issue in the past of financial close and getting things done on a timely basis. But this really has, you know, given that push and, and make sure that that is a focus to make sure these, those findings are addressed. And that's really what's important. Because like you've mentioned, last year, some of those findings had been repeated year over year over year. And, and I know the mayor and I know the commission last year made it a point to express that that is unacceptable. See those, you know, those comments by the commission and by the mayor make an impact and ensure that these findings weren't constantly being repeated and they have been addressed year over year. Does, you know, give us comfort as auditors, right? To ensure that things are being done and things are taking, being taken seriously. Can there be improvement? Absolutely. And, and like Stephanie mentioned, the city and the department is making sure that they're addressing those and for next year. So there are no findings. So that is, I think is, is something that is, is commendable. And, you know, provides us with some comfort that, you know, we're not going backwards, we're going forward. That's all I have for now, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing other hands up. Mr. Stroke, is this a public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's up for action item. So I would recommend open up to the public.
Is there anyone from the public that has written in or would like to comment on this item?
Yes, sir. We do have one person who wrote us.
Okay.
And it will be from Glenn Sullivan. Heather, if you could start the timer, please. Resident input on agenda item three. Discussion and approval of the twenty nineteen CAFER should be postponed until the next commission meeting. As the city staff is only allowing residents three days to review a highly complex document. Going forward with the approval at this meeting will be another example of the disregard to taxpayer input on the financial condition of the city. Twenty nineteen CAFER comment. Partial insufficient time to review entire document. One, why is the CAFER structured to not be consistent with the budget and monthly financial reports? Department accounts in the CAFER do not match those in the budget. And it is difficult, if not impossible, to compare. Two, the CAFER does not portray how negative values were supplemented. There is no way to determine what accounts were used to fund the negative balances in a number of account lines. The final reconciliation is not transparent and one cannot determine if funds came from the same department or were taken from other departmental accounts. I could give specific examples, however, the September twenty nineteen monthly financial report was never posted. Implementing the corrective Implementing the corrective action for number three should aid in this. Three, the auditor in the schedule of findings in question cost deficiency twenty eighteen dash zero zero two financial close and reporting repeat finding states. The city is not prioritizing the importance to adhere to the monthly and year-end closing procedures that have been established to ensure all transactions are properly captured and reported in the ledger and the general ledger in a timely manner. This is an issue I've identified for several years, had numerous discussions with the prior CFO and is necessary to assess financial status and address issues monthly. Continued failure to assess the financial status of the city's budget cannot continue, and special emphasis is necessary to begin using this management tool. Four, on page seven, the unrestricted value for governmental activities went from a deficit of one hundred forty-three million, five hundred eighty-one thousand ninety-seven in two thousand eighteen to a deficit of sixty million, six hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred seven in twenty nineteen. That eighty million dollar change in the governmental activities is not explained sufficiently. Please provide specific examples on how eighty million dollars could have been reduced in one year. In addition, please explain how the city will overcome the eighty-dollar deficit. On page eighty, on page eight of the document states the city's total non-current liabilities decreased from two hu- two hundred forty-one point eight million to two hundred point two million, or approximately seventeen point two percent from the prior year. Due largely to the pay down of long-term debt service obligations. On page nine, graph shows interest on long-term debt has increased from two million, three hundred seventeen thousand seven, four hundred seventy-eight in two thousand eighteen to three million, six hundred fourteen thousand, one hundred twenty-six. If the city's non-current liabilities have decreased so significantly due largely to the pay down of long-term debt service obligations, why has interest on long-term debt increased over sixty-four percent in one year? Six, summary of changes. Net position, page nine. The chart shows a significant decrease in expenses in twenty nineteen when compared to twenty eighteen. Several governmental categories need further explanation to understand the large decrease. A, what occurred in human services to reflect the reduction from three million, four hundred fifteen thousand, four hundred four dollars in twenty eighteen to three hundred fifty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-eight in twenty nineteen? B, how did physical environment expenses drop from seven million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-five in twenty eighteen to three million, nine hundred, three thousand, two hundred ninety-one in twenty nineteen? Seven, why aren't the building department, building permit department funds separated into their own revenue and expenses as well as the building fund reserves remaining? The recent supplemental budget request approved by the commission funded the building permits for the full eighty-five percent allowed to be paid to the contractor. However, the remaining fifteen percent was not addressed. The supplemental budget request was not submitted until well after the fiscal year end. So the fifteen percent could not have been spent during the fiscal year and hence should be in a reserve fund solely for building permit efforts.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public. Uh, I don't know if you have these uh, this lengthy request um or if you have any answers to to the questions that were presented by the the member of the public or if you had a chance to review this ahead of time. Uh, is there is there any of those questions that can be answered at this point?
Mayor, I I would like to just uh give a summary. I will have um Ms. Tinsley reach out to the resident to answer them specifically, but you know, myself, uh, Mr. Darren and um Ms. Tinsley, we have, you know, we we have identified uh room for improvement in in the budget and and uh in the way in which that information is presented to better align it with the information that's provided in CAFER. We look forward to doing that in in the future as well as the monthly reports, which uh you you all receive every month. And it's 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 really, you know, we can keep providing that information should you want it. Um, but we're looking to uh make updates and uh to the monthly report as well. For so it's 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 a better summary and easier read document to read and understand for for the public and and uh as for the specific questions, I think we actually addressed some of them here tonight, and we will uh reach out to him for the remainder of them.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor Parnas?
Um, I'll make the motion to table this till the next meeting.
I'll second it.
We have a motion from uh Vice Mayor Parnas, second from Commissioner Drosky. Uh, can we have roll call?
Commissioner Drosky.
I'm sorry, before we have roll call, uh, Mr. Stroker, is there any sort of compliance issue that we have by not approving this tonight?
My understanding is it needs to be, per state statute, it needs to be submitted within nine months at the end of the fiscal year, which would bring us to the end of June. Uh, and then it also needs to be submitted within forty-five days of the completion of the report. So I think we're okay with the forty-five days and the nine months. I don't know if uh Stephanie, uh Ms. Tinsley or or Markham knows of of anything different, but those are the two uh time requirements that I'm aware of, and I believe we would still be in compliance with the June sixteenth.
Excellent. Thank you. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, go right ahead. Roll call.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Mayor Gant?
Yes.
Okay, we are now at the consent id- uh portion of the agenda. There are three items, items four, five, and six on the consent portion of the agenda. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Commission, if you'd like to hear those uh as a group or uh individually.
Uh, Commission, that's uh, what would you like to do?
We can hear them as a group.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no calls.
I have none either.
I have no polls. Is there anyone from the public who's written in or has their hand raised to speak on any of the items?
Unless, sir, I don't have any. I mean, Anthony, Anthony, if I'm not mistaken, I believe consent is item four to nine. Is that correct, Heather?
That's all I have. Consent is items four, five, six. There's an addendum for seven. Is that correct?
Yeah, I have four, five, and six.
Just four, five, and six, then. I think seven is just an addendum, then. Okay. So this is a, uh, I'm closing it to the public. This is items four, five, and six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Preston, second by Vice Mayor Parnas. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Mayor Gant?
Yes.
Item number seven is resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, approving interlocal agreement with Broward County for the enforcement of COVID-nineteen emergency orders. Authorizing the mayor and city manager to excellent execute the interlocal agreement, providing for severability and an effective date. Uh, and if I can, on this item, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to make the comment that the uh the underlying agreement for this one was uh updated in the backup uh today. There was a a small change. We had actually pointed out to the to the county, a a little ambiguity, and it had a nine-month uh ILA term. Um, but yet the payment was for for seven months. So we were able to correct that with the county attorney's office, and it's the corrected version um here that's for you. I don't know if if the manager wants to speak to the item or or I could also speak to the item if there are any questions as well. Thank you.
City manager, any points you need to make?
Yes, just that this this is uh we'll just say the county providing us with uh some some CARES Act funding. Um, so you you heard the commissioner say three hundred and forty million dollars that they're receiving. Uh, and through this program, um through this program, we will receive approximately a hundred and thirty-one thousand. And this is so that we will use the county's three-one-one system to monitor and hopefully steer folks to the three-one-one system where we will uh react to various code violations related to COVID orders.
Now, does that also include the fact that, well, a lot of people are used to using our regular system code enforcement, which is reaching out directly? That we're not just gonna be compensated for complaints that come in through three, three-one-one. We're gonna go through our regular system as well?
You're correct, Mayor. We'll be able to input that data into three-one-one ourselves as they are received through our normal channels.
Okay, good. I I was concerned because that in our mayor's meetings, uh, that was pretty vague, and I'm glad they they followed along with their recommendations. Commission, we're looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston, second by Vice Mayor Parnas. Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, I didn't hear if you asked for public comment. I missed it. My apologies. I just didn't hear.
My apologies. Um, a- anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Do we have anybody who emailed in?
No, sir.
Okay, I'll close it to the public. Uh, we have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Mayor Gant?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, accepting the investment policy and internal control certification from the city's chief financial officer for the fiscal year ending September thirty twenty nineteen, providing for an effective date.
Mission? I don't see any questions from the commission. Is there anyone from the public that wanted to comment on this item? No. Madam Clerk, can anyone write in? Okay. Uh, looking for a motion, then?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, second by Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously.
Item number nine is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter sixty-six, Traffic and Vehicles, Article two, Stopping, Standing, Parking, Division four, Parking Areas, Section sixty-six dash seventy-six, Parking Areas, Regulated, to provide for regulated parking on the west side of Northeast twentieth Avenue. Providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date. This is first reading.
Presenting this item.
Mayor, um, this uh, this item is to have um regulated parking uh on the books for these spaces that you can see in this aerial right here. Um, so these are our current parking spaces. Um, they are within the regulated parking system in the city, and we'd like to add them to the system.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is anyone written in regarding this item?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, I don't see, I'm open to the public. Is there anyone from the public who want to comment on this item? I don't see any hands. I'm gonna close it to the public. Commission?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Hudak, second from uh Vice Mayor Parnas. We have roll call, please.
Commissioner Drosky?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes.
Mayor Gant?
Yes.
Item number ten is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, amending Section thirty dash twenty-eight of Article two, Civil Emergencies of Chapter thirty, Emergency Services of the City Code to provide for additional extensions of a state of a local emergency, providing for conflicts, conflict severability publication and an effective date. Uh, this is first reading, and and Mayor, if you would recognize me, I can just give you a brief summary of what this is.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Stroker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you may recall, it's been, it seems longer, but it it was about three months or so ago um when we got involved with this with this COVID-nineteen um issue, and you have a provision in your city code that provides for uh how to call a state of local emergency, and it's done by the mayor. It lasts for seven days, and it can continue for a thirty-day period um as approved by the city commission. I think that was written in the context of hurricanes. It doesn't contemplate something like a COVID-nineteen pandemic that can last multiple months. So in order for the commission to be allowed to extend further than the thirty days, we adopted an emergency ordinance, which you can do uh in one reading to allow for further extensions beyond that uh first thirty-day period. You did do that. We have adopted multiple extensions. Under your city charter, the emergency ordinance is only good and valid for a certain period of time. That period of time is coming up for expiration. Uh, so in order to provide for uh additional extensions, and in the future, if God forbid, we have or have one of these si- situations again to avoid the emergency ordinance process, um, this so this basically codifies in your code permanently the city commission's ability to extend for additional thirty-day periods as needed um based on the circumstances on the ground, the circumstances of the emergency. So that's the gist of this ordinance that's on first reading. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Hudak, you were hand raised?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so the the question I have is is why don't we have some language in there that basically ties into you know, if there's this a county-wide state of emergency uh that we can extend it as long as this county-wide state of emergency is we're not going back and forth, back and forth?
Yes, you're certainly not prevented for providing um those extensions. Um, if you wanna, it may be an issue to make it automatic. I'd have to look at, you know, some other provisions of the code because, you know, sometimes it well, the county may do it, they may not necessarily do it countywide, or you may wanna, you may wanna further adjust it. Um, but are you seeking to see, like, when the county basically extends theirs, you extend yours?
I mean, to me, it it sounds logical. Uh, you know, if if the county has a state of emergency, I I don't see an instance where the city wouldn't follow suit. It it, you know, um, I I unless, you know, I I'm I'm missing something.
Yeah, no, I I certainly understand your point. I guess probably what would be more likely is if potentially there's a state emergency in the city that that may either in timeframe um or just in in scope, maybe a little different than how the county, the whole county is impacted. For example, you know, a hurricane or something like that, you may have a different impact in Deerfield than you would, let's say, in 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 Weston. Um, you know, or or somewhere further inland.
All right, I was just questioning.
I mean, if it's something you really want, really interested, I could certainly look into it for for second reading, but generally cities like to retain their own, you know, independent abilities to do so and and not necessarily be tied with the county. But I understand, for example, in this instance, how you know, pretty much when the county's in the state of local emergency, it's more likely that we would be following that same pattern.
That's fine. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, is there anyone from the public who wrote in on this one? Is anyone from the public want to comment on this item? Okay, I'm gonna close it to the public, then. Commission? Commission?
Motion to approve.
Uh, Commissioner Parnas, did you have a comment to make?
Yes, I did. I think we need to maintain our independence. Um, as you know, the county may open up the beaches and we may feel it's not safe. The same way the governor opened the beaches and the county in our city did not. So I agree that we have to follow their lead, but are we forced to, or can we further restrict under this bill what we do in the interest of safety?
Uh, Mr. Stroker, I'll let you answer that.
Right, I just wanna clarify, you know, for the record, that thi- this item actually isn't uh imposing any restrictions of any kind um or loosening any restrictions of any kind. It's really just codifying your ability, if you had the state of a local emergency, to do multiple thirty-day extensions, whereas your existing code if you had the state of a local emergency, to do multiple thirty day extensions, whereas your existing code only provides uh for one thirty day extension.
Thank you. Based on that, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Commissioner Preston. Do you want to second that, Vice Mayor?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second from uh Vice Mayor Parnas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Uh we're on to uh administration legal, Mister Seroka.
I'm sure I'll go first. Um I was asked. I'm sorry?
Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um I I was asked just to provide a brief uh overview of the, some of the businesses that remain closed and and opened. There's been a lot of orders, executive orders from the governor, emergency orders from county, emergency orders from the city. Um so I'm just gonna provide a very brief overview as the, as your city manager touched on uh when he presented his uh presentation on covid nineteen impacts. There's been a trend shift in terms of the regulations, which is positive for business, whereas, you know, we gone before saying, well, everything's closed, and here's the list that's open. Now we're talking about, uh you know, you're opened unless specifically addressed as being closed in these orders. So what's still closed, and keep in mind, when we say you're open, i- if businesses don't feel comfortable opening their physical doors, they're not required to, um this is a may open. Um so if you still want to telework and and telecommute, you can do that. You don't feel, you know, comfortable opening. But as far as those who who want to open, um essentially, you can open. Uh you, there's a number of guidelines that you may have to follow, depend on your type of business. But you can open in in Broward County and in the city of Deerfield Beach unless you're one of these specified categories that would read now, which under the county order still has to remain closed, and that is uh bars, pubs, nightclubs, banquet halls, cocktail lounges, cabarets, uh and brew- and breweries, and there's an exception for those for for food takeout or delivery services. Also, uh movie theaters, concert houses, auditoriums, playhouses, bowling alleys, and arcades, and there is an exception for drive-in movie theaters. Vacation rentals are still prohibited in the county um and in the city with the exception of essential lodgers. The uh the county has submitted an application to the state, which is the process for uh allowing for vacation rentals to eventually open in the county. That uh plan needs to be approved by the state, and then the county ultimately needs to open it. Um but that will likely not take place uh for a couple of weeks, as we understand it. Um and then you also have uh casinos or paramutials that are closed with the exception, with certain subsections, if they were only opening for um, you know, a certain event that is permitted, and it's not a a pyramid, paramutual uh opening. And then, you know, the more recent, so those are the, those are essentially the closures. Some of the more recent openings that were effective as of yesterday, um just so you have the latest, uh would have been the the massage parlors and the tattoo parlors, and probably a week before that, and and again, with guidelines. And so when you can open, yes, you can open, but you have to open in accordance with the the guidelines that the county has issued for these type of businesses. And then, um you know, shortly before that, we we had the beaches open and and commercial gyms and and fitness centers. So I think that's the sort of ten thousand foot view in terms of, you know, what's left and uh for for closures and potential reopenings in the future. Answer questions or can you follow? And that's all. That that's the end of my report for today.
Thank you. City uh manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I will be brief. Um I I want to make the commission aware and the public aware that at the June sixteenth commission meeting, there will be a component of in-person interaction. Um we will have some quasi-traditional items, and we want to provide the public with every opportunity to participate in that meeting. So the commission chambers will have uh, will be open for those individuals who can't attend electronically or via telephone. Um we will create the proper social distancing and protocols for those individuals. It's not only separate within the chambers, but also to uh participate um in this setting that we have here uh virtually to interact with each one of you. So it'll be everything that we have here today. Um but from the the city commission chambers, it'll just be one additional screen where the public can uh interact and view the meeting from the chambers as well. So we were looking forward to having that set up on June sixteenth. Uh at the direction of the city commission, we have been negotiating with uh Calvin Giordano and Associates and uh on the um the building services contract. Um however, that contract is set to expire here very shortly, and we do uh continue on with those negotiations. The contract does allow for administrative one hundred and twenty day extension, um which uh I'm looking to uh to move forward with, to go ahead and 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 finish up these negotiations. I don't think we're gonna need the entire hundred and twenty days. We're getting pretty close here, uh but I will need that additional extension in order to, in order to effectively negotiate uh the terms of that that contract as the uh city commission asked us to go back and and look for a little bit of a better deal. And so we are um very uh happy to say, and would like to e- extend a great thank you to Commissioner Preston uh for his help on uh trying to get a testing site here in the city of Deerfield Beach and Mayor Gans as well. Um so I know that uh we are looking to try to get that done uh for next Monday. Um and uh we do have some meetings with them that week, so it's not a hard date. That is our target. Uh but as soon as we know the hard date of when that will open, we will certainly share that with everybody. Uh but we will have a walk-up testing site here in Deerfield Beach uh for as long as it is actually um, you know, uh as as long as as people keep coming to it. So looking forward to that. There was, I just want to make some uh some clarity here on a news release that was put out today about the International Fishing Pier. You probably saw that it it was uh announced some repairs that took place on the pier. Those are repairs that had already taken place. Uh that was language that we had to put out into being compliance with the grant reimbursement from FEMA. Uh so we had to put that release out, but that work has is is long and gone and done, so I just want to clarify that. Um I think I did mention, but I'll mention again, the recycling presentation will be coming forward on June sixteenth. And Commissioner Preston, as you had asked, a CRA presentation, uh we are targeting June sixteenth, but no later than the first meeting in July for that one as well. Thank you. That is all the comments I have.
Excellent. Thank you. And for clarity, uh Commissioner Preston did most of the heavy lifting on that. Outstanding job, Commissioner. I really appreciate that. Um we have our next item?
Item number eleven is a resolution to the City Commission of the City of Deerfield Beach, Florida, denouncing anti-Semitism, anti-Asian bigotry, and all hateful speech, violent action, and the spread of misinformation related to covid nineteen, provided for severability and effective date.
Uh I I am the sponsor of this. This was sent in a- as, and I and I understand we have a uh a letter from someone from the public who wants to comment on this. I think uh the approval of this, considering all the things that are going on in the country today, um is a good thing. So I I I I look for everyone's support on this. Uh Ma- Madam Clerk, uh I I don't know if there's anybody from the public who wants to speak on it, but if you could read to us the the letter you started. Started to read earlier.
Yes, sir. Statement for six-two Deerfield Beach City Commission Meeting. Dear Mayor Gans and Commissioners, my name is Eric Ross. I live at five-three-two-three Northwest One Hundred and Nineteen Terrace, Coral Springs, Florida, three-three-zero-seven-six. I am reaching out to you on behalf of ADL, the Anti-Defamation League, where I work full-time as a Senior Associate Regional Director. I would like to thank Mayor Gans for adding item eleven to the agenda for this meeting, and I strongly urge all of you to vote in favor of it. We are living in unprecedented times. We may all be stuck at home, but unfortunately, that means hatred is being left unchecked in all too many places. While your news feed may be filled with updates on the number of coronavirus infections, what you aren't hearing much about is the massive attempt by extremists to place blame for this pandemic specifically on the Asian-American and Jewish communities. Clearly, there is no room for hate against anyone in any of our communities. But at this moment in time, we are only seeing two specific groups singled out for blame over and over again within extremist communities and especially online. This resolution will tell the whole country that Deerfield Beach is firmly opposed to covid nineteen-related hate, to victimize, to discriminate, or to demean any member of our community. If passed, you will be one of the very first municipalities in Florida to take this important stand. I would like to thank you in advance for your leadership in doing so. Sincerely, Eric Ross.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Pardon?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public that wanted to comment on this item? I'm not not seeing anyone. So I'm gonna go ahead and close it to the public then. Uh Vice Mayor Parnas?
Yes, I'd like to see it reworded to include all minorities. I have heard many comments against our African-American brothers because they seem to be more susceptible to getting the disease, and therefore they're spreading it more than other races. I think that's nonsense, and I think we should include all minorities in our effort to take blame away from any individual group a- and call it what it is, racism.
Okay. Um I I the the wording has, while it says denouncing anti-Semitism, anti-Asian bigotry, and all hateful speech, violent action, and the spread of misinformation related to covid nineteen. Uh I don't know what wording you'd like to in there to add that to to make it more emphatic, but uh I I don't have an issue with it. Uh Preston?
Yeah, uh Mayor, um well done. Well done, Mayor. These are the kinds of things that need to be addressed. All of the commissioners uh and city staff, um I I'm proud to say uh that that look at these things in a very serious manner. And I just think, Mayor, you bringing this forward is just a very good thing um for our city, and it's the right thing to do. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh Commissioner Hudak?
Uh again, I I I echo the words of of Vice Mayor as well as Commissioner Preston, uh and thanking you, Mister Mayor, for bringing this forward. Um but I I do agree with Vice Mayor Parnas. I would like it to say anti-sent- uh sentimentism, comma, racism, comma, bigotry, and all hateful speech, uh because I think it needs to be expanded as well.
Okay, so so if if it's denouncing anti-Semitism, anti-Asian bigotry.
I wouldn't even say anti-Asian bigotry. I would say racism, comma bigotry.
Well, if we're gonna have anti-Semitism in there.
Yes, go ahead.
Well, if you're gonna have anti-Semitism, we should have the anti-Asian bigotry. The the part of the reason why this is.
I agree.
Covid. It's because people are looking at it, the 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 people that.
Absolutely.
Are Asian in our community are being targeted. So i- if we could add denouncing anti-Semitism, anti- it should be anti-Semitism, comma, anti-Asian bigotry, uh racism, and all hateful speech, violent action, the spread of misinformation. Um i- if if we could do that.
Excellent.
Do we have uh, we have a motion? Commissioner Preston, see your hand raised?
No, no, i- i- you you guys addressed it. I'm good.
Okay, uh we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Everybody wanted to help you there, Mayor.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Okay, or we go, Commissioner Preston, uh and then uh second by Vice Mayor, excuse me, Commissioner Hudak. Um all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it passes unanimously. Uh we have our comments uh now by the city commission. I'm gonna go ahead and start uh with District one.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Um first comment is uh District one office hours, uh Saturday, June thirteenth from ten o'clock to twelve o'clock, and it'll be uh via Zoom or telephone. So please reach out to uh Erica in order to go ahead and schedule that. Uh for the past week, the pandemic affecting this country has dominated the news. As it reported, as reported, it has the ability to affect every American, no matter your race, age, or gender. The pandemic I'm referring to is racism. In two thousand and four, the reality of two Americas was brought to the forefront. The America of the privileged and the wealthy, and the America of those who live paycheck to paycheck. The difference in the education provided to each, the difference in the loan rates offered, and the difference in the opportunities provided. All of that pales into comparison to what we're experiencing today. Today, we finally get to see a harder example of two Americas. Hall of Fame NBA player Kareem Abdul-Jabbar wrote in an editorial published by the Los Angeles Times this week, "Racism in America is like dust in the air." It seems invisible, even if you're choking on it, until you let the sun in. Then you see it's everywhere. Growing up in South Florida, I never saw racism. I always treated people equally and thought that is how everyone acted. For the majority of my life, I believed racism happened in the deep south during the fifties and the sixties, but had long ended when Dr. Martin Luther King educated America. In my mind, the country had moved on, and only small pockets of country bumpkins who lived in isolated backwood towns or poor African-Americans living in the ghettos were racist because they were uneducated and not exposed to other races and feared them. These past few years have shown me just how wrong I was. I still believe that the majority of Americans treat everyone equal and are colorblind. But I now realize that racists are not only in backwood towns or in the heart of the impoverished cities, but they're in every city, every town, every community, and every economic and educational level of this country. Racism is a learned behavior. Parents and communities teach it to their children with their words and actions. When any authority or figure projects racism, be it a father, a mother, a police officer, an elected official, a teacher, a preacher, or a boss, it enlarges the tumor of racism that spreads this stage four cancer throughout the body of America. No N-ninety-five mask or chemo session will protect us from the spread of racism. It is the true pandemic that has infected America. To eradicate racism, it must be eliminated on the individual level and reinforced by our leaders, our fathers, our mothers, our police officers, our elected officials, our teachers, and our preachers. Do not pray for change. Pray for the courage to be the change. Remember, your thoughts become your words, your words become your actions, and your actions become you. As an elected official, a father, and a husband, I will do everything in my authority, my thoughts, my words, and my actions to perpetuate the elimination of racism in our fine city. I have full confidence in the members of this dais, who I fully respect, in our city staff, and our police chief. I know their character. I know their professionalism. Together with your help, I know that we can vaccinate and reduce the size of the tumor that is racism and eradicate this cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Preston?
Well said, Commissioner Hudak. Great words. Thank you, sir. Mayor, you started this meeting off tonight before we could even get into city business, addressing the situation uh related to George Floyd. I want to personally thank you because it would have been very easy for you to have waited, but you chose not to do that. And because you chose not to do that, you actually help all of our city, every district, when its leadership stands up and address the tough issues. And you did that at the beginning of the meeting, and you did so with confidence, and you did so with an attitude that allows us to get something from that that has some substance. So I thank you for that. I also like to thank the city manager and staff for working with Dr. Thatchy from uh the Broward Health to be able to set up a testing site um in the city of Deerfield Beach. This is a good thing. It's so important. But you know, as we look at the situation that happened a little while ago, you know, I'm just brought to this that we are all. a little while ago, you know, I'm just brought to this that we are all God's children. Black, white, Latino, Asian, Indian. A little over a week ago, the world witnessed the video footage of George Floyd asking a police officer to let him breathe. His plea for breath and life went ignored. When George Floyd stopped breathing, for a brief second, humanity, compassion and hope stopped breathing as well. We all looked on in horror and disbelief and asked the question, why? Little did anyone know in real time that this single incident and this reprehensible act of one human being against another, while three others stood complicit, would spark a movement that would awaken the moral consciousness of our country. Perversity provoked diversity. The protests around the country subsequent to Mr. Floyd's death brought all of our ethnic groups together, holding hands, holding signs and holding on to the heartbeat of hope, reviving the inspiration of humanity and giving compassion a meaning. We all witnessed an agenda that turned from peaceful protest to a personal agenda of burning, looting and rioting with no consideration, nor respect for the rule of law, as though it was okay to break the law because one bad act deserved another. Those with their personal agenda to confuse right and wrong would lose this battle. And those that would blur the lines between what is just and that which is unjust would give way to the righteousness of the human spirit. For the just in this country, they made a human chain across so many businesses to keep out rioters and looters. And the only thing that was burned was the candle of brotherhood illuminating what is best in mankind. Because of George Floyd's death, there has been a global protest. USA, Berlin, believe it or not, New Zealand and Brazil, just to name a few. All with the same message that we are all God's children, all saying no to injustice and yes to tolerance of your brothers and sisters. You see, there are more people globally that are good than there that are bad. So the good of the earth has already won the war on hate. Whenever the ugly head of racism rises, it will be swiftly put down by the good of society. Simply a matter of numbers. There are more good people than bad. We all need to remember that, especially in times like this. We must ask the question of what the city of Deerfield Beach has learned from this? What is the positive? And how do we make our city better? In all our districts, we must ask the question, what have we done definitively to promote brotherhood and to help stamp out racism? What does one district really know about the other? I'm going to ask my colleagues for all of us to work together to promote harmony and we be the standard bearer when it comes to unification and togetherness. I'm asking my colleagues to join me for all of us to help establish a City of Deerfield Beach Community Day to be held annually. Its purpose would be to promote diversity and brotherhood and sisterhood, to let our children play and get to know each other, come together while our city comes together. And you, and if we did that, that would be meaningful change. If we could implement a City of Deerfield Beach Community Day, it is the hand that reaches across all districts that maybe we can have one, one time in District One, another time in District Two, another time in District Three, another time in District Four. But all of us coming together as one unified city. There's a challenge upon us now. I say to my colleagues of how do we deal with this? Do we simply give rhetoric to the awfulness that we've seen on television, uh, on television and, and the video? Or do we take the courage to do something about it? Please join me in less creating a community day for our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, District, uh, Three, Vice Mayor Parnas.
Uh, Ben, I, I'll volunteer to work with you to get that going. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, District Three, uh, I know all of the rest of my commissioner associates have other jobs and families. This is my only job. I spend my days now reading the emails from the office with people that complain. And I call each one of them and I listen to them carefully. And I try to explain to them in the best way possible why we're doing what we're doing and that how things can get better. But preserving your life is the utmost of important to this city. Because we value your life, we value your health. And we are doing things to prevent you from winding up as a statistic. I enjoy doing it. I will continue to do it, whether it's my district or your district, all people are alike. I get calls, when are they gonna open another pool? When are they gonna? I know people are aggravated and they need a kind word and a simple explanation because they're tired, they're frustrated, many are unemployed. And they need a little, how can I put it, brotherly love to make them understand that we're in their corner trying to save their life. And I will continue to do that because I have the inkling that this is important work. If I can make a single person in a day less angry, more acceptable to what's going on, I encourage people to wear their masks all the time in public. The life they save may be their own. Wearing gloves, if they're going up in an elevator, you don't know who touched the buttons before you. I don't put gas in my car without gloves on my hand because I don't know who handled the pump. And we have to instill upon people, this is important for your safety. I encourage store managers that if somebody comes in without a mask, please don't serve them. The law says they have to have a mask. More important, protect your workers and your other customers. Don't serve anybody that comes into your restaurant or your supermarket where I shop unless they have a mask on. That's what the county wants. If you're in public, you're within six feet of other human beings and that's any store you go into, you must wear a mask. And I think all of us have to instill this to the public that we talk to, that it's for their safety and the safety of their families, that you wear the mask until it's safe. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Grozsky?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just would start by saying that this Saturday, June sixth is my Saturday office hours. They likewise will be by Zoom and by telephone from ten to noon. Anyone that would like to participate can reach out to me directly or uh, to City Hall to schedule that appointment. The disadvantage, if you will, going forth is that, you know, your words have largely been taken by the time that they get to me. So I'm not apt to repeat, you know, the thoughts and sentiments of my colleagues, you know, the, the, just to speak for the sake of speaking. Um, cause I think you guys know where we all stand and we align, you know, on this particular issue. Um, the, the right, but I, I will add this, which is different from my colleagues and, and in harmony with that, is that the right to protest is guaranteed by the First Amendment to our constitution as well as the right to free speech. Um, heck, our country wouldn't have been founded without the right to protest. Uh, and when we see an injustice, we have not only the right, but I think the duty to, to protest. Um, but there's a right way and a wrong way to do it. And I would like to applaud Deerfield Beach for doing it the right way. Uh, I think our residents have handled themselves well. I think they have uh, taken all the necessary, you know, actions and protocols. And so I would just like to thank the residents of Deerfield Beach for their calmness uh, in such a very turbulent and traumatic situation as Mr. Floyd's death. There's um, there's really no other way to, to put it. So I am with Commissioner Preston, you know, whatever we can do to promote harmony in this city. Uh, I'm on board. Count me in, uh, count District Four in and whatever we can do, uh, as a team, because we are a team. Uh, I consider the five of you, not just my colleagues, uh, your four, rather than just four of you. Um, not just my colleagues, but my brothers, uh, as well. And, and I miss the commission meetings in person, um, because I would shake every one of your hands, you know, after a meeting, win, lose or draw. Uh, and I would do so after this meeting as, as, as well. But going forward, um, yeah, count me and, and District Four, Four in as I echo everyone else's sentiments tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I do want to thank all four of you for your words, uh, really outstanding and Commissioner Preston, we're with you. Uh, we're with you. Whatever we need to do to help bring this community together, we're on board. Uh, I think you've heard it unanimously from all of us and, and you obviously definitely count me in. And I want to thank you for giving me insight and uh, when all this happens, you know, I, and this isn't violating sunshine law because it's not about policy, but it's just talking about life in general. It's talking about how do we, how do you deal with the situation with what's going on in the community in, in, in the country? So, so to be able to, to pick up the phone and call you, Commissioner, um, because you have a perspective that I don't have. And, and I greatly appreciate it. Look, I, I think Deerfield Beach is what Vice Mayor said has done an outstanding job. And I know the residents are, they want to speak out, black, white. I think we've reached a point in this country where people have fed up. And for those who are frustrated, and, and I know there are outside characters that are destroying these peaceful protests and, and helping destroy the message of what these peaceful protests are meant to be. But I will say this, the man that everyone points to as being the person that really led us with peaceful protests, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was murdered. Tommy Smith, John Carlos in the sixty-eight Olympics, putting up their fists at the time. That sounds like nothing now. It was completely controversial back in the year that I was born and they were looked at and they were hated, just like we hated the NFL players who took a knee to do a silent protest for the very same issue that we're talking about here about what happened with Mr. Floyd. If we continue to not listen to these peaceful protests, put them aside and not take the time to listen, but give them nothing but lip service and pretend like we are, but take no action, we're just paving the road towards an unpeaceful protest. I'm willing to listen. I'm going to keep my mouth shut and I'm here to listen. So I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing to bring this city together and hopefully set an example for the other cities here, not just South Florida, but everywhere. Um.
Good job, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Um, I, I do want to thank Commissioner Preston about bringing the testing site in. That was a big focus. It's something we want to do as we reopened. Um, Commissioner Parnas, or Vice Mayor Parnas, did an outstanding job getting us one in the vicinity. It was, that was a hell of a battle to even get us that. Commissioner Preston, uh, your continued battles has helped us bring one, actually in the borders of City Deerfield Beach. Both of those testing sites are going to have a huge impact on us being able to help contain this virus because the more people are aware that they have it, the less likely they are to go out and spread it out into the public. All of this has been extremely frustrating. We know that. It has been, trust me. We know it more than anybody else because we not only have to deal with it in our lives like all of you, but we hear it from everyone out there. And there are things that we don't have control of and for people to be redundant and talk about things that we can't control. I really hope they spend their time going to the county and speaking with them because I can tell you this. Every time we take a step forward with the county and trying to communicate and we have these mayor's conference meetings each week and we talk about things, we get what we call the Friday night surprise. The county comes out with a new executive, a new emergency order that we're blindsided with. This last one on Friday, we didn't know what was coming. Fortunately, the city manager participates in conference calls with the other city managers. He was a little bit more aware. But I can tell you, many of the mayors are blindsided about with what happened. What happened on Sunday when the, the emergency order came out regarding, uh, the curfew, that was, we literally did not have something in front of us until fifteen minutes before it actually was to take effect. The, the county can't seem to get out of their own way and it's extremely frustrating. And, and it, that is a situation that despite the fact that we ask for lead time so we can inform our businesses and our residents about what is happening and what is going on so they can gear up for these things, we are blindsided constantly. It seems to be an endless battle. It's very frustrating. Um, it's equally frustrating when we talk about our school board. High school graduation for the, the kids in the class of twenty twenty is extremely heartbreaking. And I'm a parent of a graduate of the class of twenty twenty. My daughter is, goes to Monarch High School. Monarch High School is for all of the kids that are in the west portion of Deerfield. That's where they're zoned um, for high school. And the school board has done nothing to assist us with trying to give something back to these graduates that have had so much taken away from them, all the pomp and circumstance that all of us have been through. Uh, back in the day, it used to be grad night. Now it's senior bash, I believe it's called and they graduate, just prom, graduation itself for as a parent and not be able to see your child walk across the stage and take their diploma. So much has been taken away from them. And it's affected us specifically here in Deerfield Beach, or at least I should say a little more uniquely because of the tragedies that happened with the loss of life and the, and this teen suicides we had at Deerfield Beach High School. Now, and Commissioner Preston has made this point in public and, and he's absolutely right. The last real memory that all of those students have of gathering together at that high school was at Bryce Goudy's memorial service. The soup, the superintendent and its school board members have remained silent. They've essentially put it on the city and the school principals to come up with something to do for these graduates special. Now, that's rather interesting considering that, as I stated, Deerfield Beach High School not only just serves the kids in Deerfield Beach, it's zoned for Pompano, Lighthouse Point and other cities. Western portion of Deerfield Beach has Monarch High School, which is in Coconut Creek. So this is completely, the boundaries are not the same when it comes to a city. To put it on a city to have for us once again to pick up their slack, to put, put forward our tax dollars to support something that should have been organized and put together by the school board, complete, is completely wrong. It's the same thing when it comes to school resource officers. The school board has failed us once again to do their job. They seem incapable of doing it. And they take an attitude of let them eat cake by sitting up in the high horses and do nothing. Now, they will tell you, they have given the principals permission to deal with the cities and move forward. Why? I have no idea. The city should be an ancillary, um, support group on this. Whatever they need, we will supply, but they're asking us to work with the principal who might be under orders or whose job might be in jeopardy if they do something the school board doesn't want to be able to put together to honor these kids. This is a unique situation. It takes uh, thinking outside the box and they should have done it. They won't even let us use school board property to do anything. So that'll tell you their level of commitment towards this. I haven't seen a budget for what they're going to do for these kids. What I've seen is the community step up. It's a shame. And for those, that class of twenty twenty, like everybody goes through hardships and there's going to be disappointment in life. It's character building. It's unfortunate and we feel for you. And it's not something we can say, let's just do it for Deerfield Beach High School because there are other schools in our boundaries. And a big portion of our, our city, a large portion of our city is zoned for a school in another city. So for all of them are, we, we wish we could do more. But honestly, if you're angry, go look at your tax bill. See who gets more tax money from you. The city of Deerfield. See who gets more tax money from you, the city of Deerfield Beach or the school board. And then call your school board rep and ask why they haven't talked to their in the city of Deerfield Beach to say, hey, how do we do something nice? Or talk to your superintendent and ask why. He doesn't even bother to respond to an email that I put onto his intergovernmental affairs say why they haven't done something for these kids. It's a shame, and and it, I wish we could do more. Um, price gouging. We've heard about price gouging during this pandemic. Uh, I'm not gonna name any specific names, but I am hearing quite a bit from certain hardware stores who seem to be uh, charging extraordinary prices. I don't know if they're price gouging or not, but it doesn't sound right. But if you have questions or concerns regarding price gouging, you can call eight six six nine six six seven two two six. That's eight six six nine six six seven two two six to report it, if you have any instances of price gouging. Um, having the Cafferty, I'm glad we did put it off, give us a little more time to digest, and I know, Staff, you've put it, you've been put in extraordinary circumstances, and and it's hard with all the changes that we've had on top of the pandemic to be able to get through all of it. So I'm glad this is out. I I appreciate Commissioner Drosky asking us to reconsider and push it on. And and the resident who asked about that, they were right. We need a little more time to digest. But I will say this, looking at what we see, this is good news. We're heading in the right direction. And I want to remind everybody something that puts us in a unique situation. I don't feel that we should be looking at our reserves as the sole way to get ourselves out of this hole. We need to look at our spending and figure out what we need to do. But if it were not for the fact that we made a commitment and took a beating by some of these people out there who insisted, including former elected officials who sat here in this seat and failed candidates who promoted it, not wanting us to increase our reserves, we knew a raining day, rainy day would someday come. That rainy day is now. It's not just rainy, it is poor. And if we had taken the advice of some of the people that sat up here or tried to sit up here and had our reserves in a situation, we would not even have that as a, as a uh, choice for us to make on how to get us out of this hole that this pandemic has put us in. All right, so for those of you who stuck to your guns, who took the beating and came forward and ran for office on a platform of we need to move forward and increase our reserves, thank you. Good job, because those who didn't want to do it and wanted to reduce it, and I go back to a former mayor who wanted to reduce it to this low as seven or eight million dollars in our reserves at one point, to see us take a stand and and push forward to have that money to be able to depend on at a later date. Well, I'm glad we were able to do that, so I appreciate it. Um, with that, uh, that's all I have to say.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Parnas, second for Commissioner Hudak. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Great job, guys.